Okay, I see Darren, Councilmember Darren Soon, Vice Mayor Steve Detrick. I see Councilmember Stephanie Wayne and Councilman Pat Hume. Are you all here?
Yes.
Alright, let's get rolling. There is, we are reconvening from closed session. There's nothing to report. With that in mind, let's go ahead and jump to open session. Item 3.1. Mr. Clerk?
And that item is 3.1, to receive an update on the city's efforts in response to COVID-19 and provide staff direction.
Alright. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Hopefully you can all hear me okay.
Sounding good, City Manager.
Alright, this is Jason Bearman, City Manager. So, the purpose of this report is to provide the City Council and the community with an update on the city's efforts in response to COVID-19 as information is quickly evolving. First, I would like to say that the City of Elk Grove cares deeply about all of our employees, residents, and businesses, and we as staff are working hard to respond to the urgent needs caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm hearing from the mayor and the City Council members on daily basis asking for updates and what else we can do as a city to provide assistance to those in need. Our primary concern is the health and safety of our employees and our community, but certainly economic concerns have become just as big of a concern for many due to the impacts to businesses and employees. It is important note that the city's actions are primarily being driven by guidance directives and orders issued by the Sacramento County Public Health Department and other public health agencies, including the CDC and California Department of Public Health. I'd like to provide a brief update on city services since the stay-at-home order. While city buildings are closed to the public, most of city staff and services are still available. Most city staff are working remotely and are able to provide services over the phone or online. City continues to offer essential services to the community, including staff, for police, animal services, transit, garbage, and recycling planning, and building, street maintenance, and much more. I'm going to provide a brief update on several different areas of interest for the community. First is relating to our efforts to provide important updates to the community through various channels that the city has. The city participates in the county joint information center to ensure release of consistent and critical messaging to Elk Grove residents. We have created a dedicated COVID-19 webpage to have a central location for information dissemination for our residents and businesses. We are producing a weekly video message with the mayor as official spokesperson of the city to provide video messages to residents at critical message points. We are providing regular social media posts through all available channels, providing the latest information coming from local, state, and federal governments to residents. Specifically regarding assistance for employees and businesses, we have a business hotline that is being staffed by our Economic Development Team to assist businesses and employees impacted by COVID-19. Businesses are encouraged to contact the Office of Economic Development directly at econdev@elkrovecity.org or 916-627-3338. In partnership with the Sacramento Metro Chamber, the city supported the launch of the Coronavirus Rapid Response Website. The website, which is rapidresponse.metachamber.org, contains all the latest information and resources for the region's affected businesses and employees. Some of these same resources are on the city's coronavirus website for businesses, which is elkrovecity.org/covid19biz. Staff presented an urgency ordinance to council that would impose a temporary moratorium on residential commercial evictions and provide relief for utility services in the City of Elk Grove. This item is on the City Council agenda for reconsideration as item 3.2 made to follow this item. The city launched a campaign to support local restaurants that have been impacted by closures of in-dining facilities. The social media campaign is encouraging residents to purchase takeout meals three times a week in support of a variety of restaurants. Staff from Visit Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Chamber are calling individual restaurants to ensure they are open for business and providing takeout and curbside, and this information will be shared with the public. Staff has created an FAQ document on the city's website that answers many commonly asked questions that the city is receiving from businesses. This document will be updated regularly as new questions from businesses and employees become common and frequent. The FAQ can be found at elkrovecity.org/covid19biz. And staff is closely monitoring new and emergency federal and state resources, including a new federal stimulus package that was announced earlier this morning. I'd like to just take a couple minutes to highlight some of the information that we are currently aware of that impacts city operations, businesses, residents, and employees. Details are still emerging, but this is what we know now related to this latest stimulus package by the federal government. First is related to business assistance. The plan includes about $500 billion that can be used to back loans and provide assistance to companies. Specifically, it has more than $350 billion to aid small businesses, including by providing low interest, no interest, and even forgivable loans. Staff from our Economic Development Department will be listening in to the most current information from the Small Business Administration this Friday. For individuals, the package will provide direct payments to lower and middle-income Americans of $1,200 for each adult, as well as $500 for each child. In addition, the bill would add $600 per person per week onto the base maximum unemployment benefit for four months. This essentially means that the average American who is unemployed or underemployed as a result of impacts related to COVID-19 would receive a full paycheck for the next four months. Additionally, the governor announced this afternoon that he has reached an agreement with local and federal banks to provide a 90-day mortgage payment relief package for those that were affected by the COVID-19 crisis. Additional elements of this stimulus package include $5 billion for the Community Development Block Rep program to enable states, counties, and cities to rapidly respond to COVID-19 relating to economic and housing impacts caused by it. This includes things like childcare centers, food banks, and senior services. Of the amounts provided, $2 billion will be allocated to stakes and units of local government that received an allocation under the fiscal year 2020 CPG formula. This includes the City of Elk Grove. Right now, the latest information that we have estimates that we may receive a little more than $500,000 as a result of this that we can redeploy into the various partnerships in the community. A $450 million package for emergency food assistance, this is directly for food banks across the country. $7 billion for affordable housing and homelessness assistance. And $400 million for FEMA grants, which includes $200 million for emergency food and shelter programs, which provides shelter, food, and supportive services through local nonprofit organizations. Also, there are talks already of a fourth stimulus bill. As of now, there's not a lot of information known regarding what would be included in this package, but some lawmakers have expressed a desire for an infrastructure package, while others have stated it would be a cleanup package for items that are missed from earlier stimulus packages. It appears that these state and federal measures will provide significant relief to businesses, employees, and residents. There are a variety of other programs that the city can pursue if there are still gaps in assistance that we could help fill. Based on the new information we have received, staff recommends monitoring how these funds will be distributed, staying up to date and providing our residents with additional resources that we've made available, and then listening to our businesses, residents, and local nonprofits about any remaining unmet needs that we can help meet. Staff is working closely with the city's state and federal lobbying firms and receiving daily updates. I also want to provide some information about how we are supporting the efforts of the Elk Grove Food Bank in response to their immediate needs as outlined by their executive director, which includes a lack of regular food donations, an increased demand of new clientele, a decrease in the number of volunteers, since many of their volunteers are 65 or older and considered high risk. Based on these needs, the city has responded in the following ways. The city started a Facebook fundraiser on behalf of the food bank. Mayor, Lady, and Councilmember Detrick are participating in a local Coronavirus Task Force to identify food bank needs, resources, and fundraising opportunities. City staff provided advice and suggested content to food bank staff on updates needed for their website to outline the additional need and urgency of their situation. Staff also contacted Assemblymember Cooper, who represents Elk Grove, to ensure he was aware of the situation of the food bank. In response, he donated $20,000 to the food bank and communicated their needs to the governor's office. I also have some very exciting news to report. Very hot off the presses, just announced later, just in the last hour or two, that Apple, which has a campus here in Elk Grove, has made a various generous decision to donate $100,000 to the Elk Grove Food Bank. In addition to the food bank, staff sent a short survey to all local nonprofit partners providing essential services, including food and essential supplies, rental assistance, utility assistance, and other critical services in the Elk Grove community. Among other things, the survey asked whether they are seeing an increased number of clients, what their most critical needs are, and how the city could help during this time. Possible assistance could include coordinating fundraising, promoting volunteer and commodity donation efforts from community members and private corporations, as well as possible emergency grant funding from the city. Staff plans to share more information at the April 8 City Council meeting, what specific needs have been identified, and after the information from the latest stimulus plan, can be fully analyzed and determined how it will impact supportive services in Elk Grove. One of the other questions, the other items we're getting a lot of questions on is relating to the homeless in our community. In response, the city installed portable restrooms with handwashing stations at Del Meyer Park, Zandman Park, and the I-5 Laguna Boulevard Park and Ride Lot at Laguna and Harbor Point Drive. Also, Old Town Plaza and CSD Park restrooms continue to be available from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. We created a street sheet detailing sanitation, food, and medical resources available to the homeless to be distributed by PD and nonprofit organizations. We've worked with Elk Grove Heart to plan for additional outreach and creation of sanitation kits. Heart is also adding food distribution dates and locations. We're also coordinated with other agencies on potential regional approaches to sheltering using hotel motel or travel trailer resources. City staff and police department personnel remain in contact with regional partners in addressing those challenges associated with homelessness. And finally, I won't go into all the details on city operations that are included in the staff report, but suffice to say that we have activated the city's emergency operations plan and we are currently operating at Level 3 activation. All Elk Grove Police Department field personnel have been issued a personal protection equipment kit, which contains gloves, N95 respirator mask, isolation gown, and eye protection. The department is continuing to research innovative solutions to further support our personnel. The police department established a department operations center to facilitate information expeditiously while organizing the fluidity of rapidly changing conditions related to COVID-19. This DOC meets with executive staff and managerial staff multiple times a day to maintain the health and safety of employees while maintaining operational integrity of the police department. City manager and chief of police are distributing regular messaging, keeping all city staff and on-site contractors apprised the latest information as it becomes available. Of course, the city is tracking and logging all expenses, including overtime related to the COVID-19 response. Regular updates will be provided to the county and state offices of emergency services for possible future reimbursement. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Jason, this is Mayor Steve Lee. I've got a question. Some of the things that other cities are doing is providing daycare or any sort of support along those lines with first responders. Is that something that we're working on in Elk Grove?
There is some provisions that just came out of the stimulus package that deal with daycare related to first responders that we're going to be analyzing. Right now, we don't have the resources from a staff perspective to be able to offer those types of programs, but it's certainly something we can continue to monitor, especially if there's a need locally from our first responders.
This question might be for the chief. Chief, have you heard any hardships from our police officers with the struggle of being on duty and having to watch the little ones as well?
Yeah, we're providing reasonable accommodation as necessary. We, you know, we're meeting with our staff regularly. We're listening to them and trying to provide whatever resources we can to allow them to concentrate on providing that service to our community. So, we're in constant communication. We have opportunities to hear directly from our officers on a daily basis, and so far we're finding a very good balance with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Soon here. If I could go ahead. Jason, thanks for that information. It's exciting to hear. We're getting some help from the federal government. Very pleased to hear our partners, community partners at Apple decided to step up, and I'm glad that you reached out to the other nonprofits as well. Look forward to hearing that report back on April 8. I just would urge you to, because time is of the essence and folks are really wanting to know where that help is coming from, it goes without saying, but just to emphasize, you know, as soon as you get news after Friday, maybe if we could report out daily, hourly, whatever it is, that so folks could have better understanding of the details behind these stimulus packages, that would be helpful to all parties involved.
Absolutely. As we continue to digest and understand the information, we will be sending information out to the community through our social media and other avenues.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, I don't see anyone. I don't hear anyone who wishes to ask any questions, so let's go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, if you could read any requested comments that members of public wanted to be read into record or field any phone calls or email requests.
So, for right now, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, I have no individuals signed up for item 3.1. I don't have any callers that are signed up for 3.1, so we're clear on any public comment under item 3.1.
Alright, that being the case, let's go ahead and close public comment. Any additional deliberation from council or direction?
I have something, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Wayne.
Mr. Bearman, thank you for that update. I do want to add that I did request at the last special meeting that we consider some funds from the city in putting aside for supportive services that can marry along and complement the ordinance that we're about to discuss here later today. And I know I had some conversations with you, Mr. Bearman, and I'd like to make sure that we continue to have council support around having staff look to see how we can invest our money into our communities. While these stimulus packages are coming together, we don't for sure know when they're going to happen, and we don't know exactly who it's specifically going to serve, and that there could be some people that are missed from it. And I know that Councilmember Soon and I had talked a little bit about this, and we've reached out to a few entities here in our city that may be interested in also contributing to it as well, too. But specifically, my goal is to have supportive services around rent, rental assistance, and that we would meet with families that have been affected by this COVID-19, and that being able to help them make their rent on time, and that I believe that would go well with this ordinance here that we're about to discuss. I don't know if Councilmember Soon, do you have anything you want to add around that? My goal here is to just continue to keep this hot so that we can continue to talk about it. Things are changing fast, but I believe that there is an opportunity for us as a city to step in to assist our residents here.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wayne. I wholeheartedly agree with you. I really appreciate your expertise on this, since I know you do this in your day job, so to speak, and so I think there's a very good opportunity to leverage your resources as well as some city resources and help from the community, our community partners, that we could provide maybe either stopgap or funding if things don't come through in a timely enough fashion for some folks. These families, residential families, that may need help sooner than even a week or so later. I also want to add on, piggyback off of that, I know a couple of us, Councilmember Wayne, and I have also spoken with region banks about a possibility of utilizing a community bank, and I hope, I know Staskin talking with them and Josh Wood over there, and I hope that we'll continue those conversations to see if there's a way to, again, leverage city funds and this partnership with the community bank to provide relief for some of our small businesses as well, and let's continue to explore that option, too, so we can try to help everybody.
Alright, anyone else? King?
No, I just want to, this is Councilmember Hume. I just want to commend staff for staying on top of this. I know it's ever-changing moment to moment, many different layers, and I just appreciate all the hard work that everyone's putting into it.
Right.
Mayor Detrick. I agree with Councilman Hume on that. You know, that was the direction we gave a week ago, was to do exactly what they did. You know, I know everybody talks about how urgent everything is, but even this urgency ordinance, if we pass this tonight, really isn't going to impact anybody till April 1st, because it isn't retroactive to March 1st if people were not making the rent prior to this whole coronavirus issue. So, I know that we want to look at moving things forward, but I think we don't have to do it as quick as everybody wants to jump. I think some of this is political posturing, to be honest with you. I think we want to do the right thing. We want to do it once and do it right, and I think that was what the message was we gave last week. To be honest with you, I'm very, very disappointed with the media and the online bloggers for the hysteria that they've created. It was falsely created because they didn't truthfully report the news that exactly how it came out. The only one who gave a fair representation was the Elk Grove citizen. Pretty much the TV and online bloggers and some individual residents purposely, in my opinion, created hysteria unnecessarily. So, I look forward to how we can work tonight together to help not just tenants, but help landlords in businesses as well. Because we, you know, when we were all sworn in elected, we were sworn in to be equally represent every resident, every business, and every property owner. That's what I've done for the last 12 years, and that's what I plan to do as long as I'm on this council, and I believe that wholeheartedly is the same interest that the rest of our council does. But that's all I have for now.
Alright, thank you. And that being the case, we received the file, you received some direction. Let's move to the next item.
Mayor Lee, sorry, before we move on, I just want to affirm that the direction that was received, everybody was in agreement, right? I mean, it's hard without even being able to see each other, so in terms of working with the banks and...
Yeah, I'll support that. Councilmember.
Okay, thank you.
I support working with the banks. I caution on the, any other assistance without collateral, because, again, you're talking about if we pass this tonight, the first monies that would be due would be in June. So, that gives, you know, a little over two months for people to kind of regroup, and then the federal and state programs to kind of match that.
I understand your concern, Vice Mayor. I guess I would just say maybe if we just have tools in place and we can assess whether, you know, whether we need to implement those tools as we go farther down the road here. I mean, things are just, continue to change on a daily basis, and we just don't know. We don't know the details of this federal help that should be coming our way. And so, I just, I feel like keeping as many options open as we can, developing as many tools as we can is the most prudent thing for us to do.
Right, I think it's just giving options to both our residents and our commercial side as well, too, is what we're looking at. There's no one-size-fits-all here, and so I would wait to bring those details forward and give staff the opportunity to work things out for us.
Yeah, I support it, coming back to a council meeting in the future.
Okay, I think we're good.
As long as we're not trying to push this tonight and kind of jump the gun again.
I think it's just to continue the efforts, you know, adding on those two additional efforts, but we're not implementing anything tonight.
So, we can continue discussions with region business as well as local nonprofits to identify what that might look like, and then bring back some options at the next City Council meeting.
That's what I support.
Yeah, and the residential side, too, right, Jason?
Yeah, that would really be relating to the nonprofit assistance.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, that's right, yeah.
That works for me.
Alright, excellent. Let's move to the next item.
And that'll take us on to item 3.2, which is to consider the options of a urgency or non-urgency interim ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions and providing relief for utility services in the City of Elk Grove, item sequo exempt.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. John Hobbs, your city attorney, I'll present this briefly and then turn it over to the council to take public comment and potential action. This is a similar ordinance as to what you have previously seen. We had a special meeting, as you will recall, on Monday, two days ago, and the council gave some additional direction, and I tried to implement some of that direction, and we can certainly do something different tonight if we didn't quite get it right, if you like. The agenda packet contains an urgency ordinance, which, to be adopted, would require a four-fifths vote of the City Council. Consistent with council direction, I've also included a non-urgency ordinance, which mirrors the urgency ordinance in terms of substance. If there's not a four-fifths vote for the urgency ordinance, the council has the option to pass the non-urgency ordinance, and that would not be effective until later, as described in the staff report. With respect to the terms of the ordinance, as I mentioned, it is very similar to what you had already seen, but I did insert some metrics into it stemming from our council meeting on Monday to try to put in some objective criteria as to what it would be required for a person to seek relief under the ordinance with respect to a loss of household income. We've pegged that at 20%. And as a loss of business income, also at 20%, or substantial out-of-pocket medical expense, also a 20% expense of a gross monthly income in a single month. That's not carved in stone. The council can provide different direction if those are not numbers the council is comfortable with. I've also included some provisions in here for criteria for a tenant who is entitled to protection under the ordinance. They are presumed to have made a reasonable amount of rent if they pay 50% of their rent in a given month. So, I'm happy to take any questions. I know a lot of you have seen this already. There may be some public comment. We did get some written public comment. I think you've been provided that by the city clerk. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the council and not belabor the point anymore, but if there's anything I can address for you, let me know.
Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Hume. I have a couple of questions of staff, and then I'd like to make a comment prior to opening up for public comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
John, in the staff report on page 2, and I believe this is referencing Section G, excuse me, Section 5G, where it says that "Any person afforded eviction protection under this ordinance may raise application of this ordinance as a defense to any eviction unlawful detainer proceeding." How does that comport itself with subsection B of the same section that says "Nothing herein shall prohibit evictions for reasons other than those specified in paragraph A"?
Okay, so, a couple of points there. So, if someone is entitled to protection under the ordinance because they qualify for a substantial decrease in income, substantial business decrease, or significant out-of-pocket expenses, then they're cloaked with the protection of the ordinance. Then, if a tenant is evicted in violation of the ordinance in light of the fact that they have that protection, they will be able to raise that as an affirmative defense in the lawsuit. They would have to demonstrate that they are entitled to the protection, and then a judge hearing the unlawful detainer, the eviction trial, would make a determination as to whether or not they were afforded that protection. The other language that you reference that says "Nothing herein prohibits evictions for reasons other than those specified in paragraph A of subsection 5," or section 5, rather, that's intended to apply to essentially any other eviction. So, for instance, if somebody is running a drug house, that's an illegal activity, that's grounded to evict them, they simply don't get the protection under the ordinance. Also, if somebody is not paying rent and haven't been paying rent for some time for reasons unrelated to the COVID-19 issue, they also would not be entitled to protection under the ordinance. A landlord could institute eviction proceedings in that regard. So, this ordinance protects those who are impacted by the COVID virus or some government response there, too, if there's an isolation order or something like that, where they can demonstrate that as a result of, there's a causal connection, that they can demonstrate that they had a decrease in either household or business income, then they get the protection of the ordinance. So, that's sort of the qualifying criteria. If you don't meet that qualifying criteria, then the same rules apply as any other unlawfully detained or eviction proceeding. criteria, then the same rules apply as any other unlawful detainer eviction proceeding. A person would still be subject to eviction for illegal activity for other reasons for non-payment of rent. So that's how those get reconciled.
So I, I guess what's, what's kind of tripping me up here is that it, it calls out afforded eviction protection under this ordinance, but then it says you can use this ordinance as a defense to any eviction.
Okay, so perhaps we need some clarity in the language as, as concerns the word "any," because I, I understand your point. That was not the intent of the ordinance, and I don't think it would necessarily be read that way because the whole ordinance is read in context. However, clarity is always better. So we can, assuming the council wants to pass this, I can revise that to say essentially, as a defense to evictions for which a person is entitled to protection under this ordinance. So that, so that they get that narrow protection under the ordinance is not intended to apply to an eviction for which the person is not entitled to protection.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm not trying to get down in the weeds on wordsmithing just yet. But then how does the federal stimulus package that the city manager just mentioned with respect to employment reimbursement and small business relief, how would that get calculated up against the loss of income provision that would have to be demonstrated in order to, to receive protection?
Well, assuming those, those matters are income that's coming in, we're looking at the total household income or the total business income for a particular month. So that would be considered as income under this. So if someone is able to take advantage of some alternative income, whether it's that or something else, maybe they could do an odd job and bring in money in another way. That would be calculated as part of their income, and we'd look at all of that.
Okay, so it's household or business income regardless of source?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a quick comment on the record. You know, there's been a lot of communication around this issue, as, as people can certainly understand, but some of it has been mischaracterizations about me personally. And so I'd like to begin by addressing the allegations of conflict of interest. Yes, I am a landlord. However, my guess is that were I a renter, that supposed conflict would never have been alleged. But that's a discussion that we had at another time, and the city attorney has made a determination of general applicability that a conflict does not exist. Regardless, what I bring is real-life experience. I am a landlord. I ran out the first house I bought roughly 20 years ago. My tenant is a single mom with two teenage boys. She pays probably 30% less than what the market could justify. And I don't do this because I'm just a nice guy. I do it because she takes care of the property like it's her own, and I hope that she stays as long as she wants to. Now, I can contrast that symbiotic situation with a previous tenant who got himself into a downward spiral that cost him his job and his family, and he stopped paying rent. At the beginning of the third month of pleading with him to help get his life together, I told him he left me no choice but to issue a pay or quit, and then I'd given him every out so that an eviction didn't go on to his record and make it harder for him in the future. I did everything within my influence to convince him not to make a bad situation worse. He waited until midnight of the third day to return my keys to me, which I was still thankful for, because that probably avoided an additional three-to-six-month process to have it work its way through the courts. After all of that, I came out of pocket to the tune of about $10,000 to make the property livable again. And by the time I got it rented, it had been over five months without an income. I am a landlord, and I bring real-life experience. By the grace of God, I was able to weather that. But what if I was a retired couple who counts on rental for their retirement income? Like one of the emails I received, "A sole provider for my young family who bought a property is a nest egg and relies on the income to service the mortgage." What about a small business that manages a modest real estate portfolio? What if financial hardship induces the sale of rental properties thereby further constraining an already limited supply? We cannot paint an entire group of people, individuals, as though they are a faceless, nameless, unworthy entity. This speaks to an obvious ideological bias that is undergirded by using terms such as I've also seen in emails like slumlord, miser, and parasite when referring to a landlord. Newsflash: There are saints and sinners in this world, and your obligations, your income, or your assets neither assure you a place in the one column nor condemn you to the other. There is no socioeconomic basis where it is acceptable to inflict undue harm. Trying to legislate morality is a fool's errand and usually reveals the overreach of government, not the trappings of the free market. We will require the strongest economy and as much available capital as possible to come out of this on the other side. Just this morning, it was revealed Congress has passed a $2 trillion stimulus package that will provide much-needed relief for workers, families, and small businesses. The landscape is changing moment to moment, and part of our collective angst is a natural aversion to change and disruption. Here's the truth that is tough to say and maybe even tougher to hear. Everyone needs to take a breath and think through things calmly. The reality is no one, no one is going to find themselves evicted tomorrow. Even if a dastardly landlord wanted to seize upon this crisis to achieve personal gain, the fact is there is a process and a legal system that presides over that. The courts where that would play out are closed until the middle of next month and sure to be clogged well after that, sorting through a legitimate backlog. The peace officers who would enforce those notices have more pressing matters at hand. Literally, a landlord cannot just eject someone from their home if they've only failed to pay rent. No one should fear that they are going to be homeless or their business shuttered at a moment's notice. No one is a rudderless victim right now, subject to the winds of change. And yet, at the same time, we all are. This too shall pass. This dust will settle. We are all going through this together and experiencing an unprecedented, uncertain, and extraordinary circumstance. But we have the ability to be sure we are poised to achieve beneficial goals and not regret unintended consequences later. This requires systems-level thinking and not devolving into a win-lose, short-term Band-Aid. If we adopt a solution-minded outlook, we can create something out of this better and stronger than we were before. But that will require a pretty healthy spoonful of common sense in the face of panic. For Supreme Court Justice Potter stood that ethics is knowing the difference between what you have a right to do and what is right to do. We cannot be so calloused as to use this time of crisis to advance any particular agenda that further drives a wedge between us. As a community, as a nation, and as a people, we deserve better. Personally, I have faith in my neighbors and my colleagues, and I look forward to tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Is there any questions? All right, hearing that there are none, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, if you can read any requested comments to be read into the record or field any phone calls or emails with a request to speak.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. So what we are going to be doing is to give a sense of the playing field that we currently have, is that I have about 30 requested items to be either read, the majority of them to be read. We have a few recorded messages, and then we have two individuals that we are going to be reaching out to so that they can call in with their comments. What I'm going to start with is start with the reading of the comments. Part of our new format, and for any of our viewers that have seen before, previously, we were pulling up a speaker timer and the name. Unfortunately, with the system, we're, we are figuring out what we can and what we can't do. But I do have a speaker timer, and for anyone that is viewing, for any of our participants, there is a clock timer for the meeting total, but I will have a speaker timer going. But many of the comments are brief, at least the ones that came in via email. There were comments that were submitted earlier via written comment, but they were requested to be read into the record, and I am planning to move forward to read those into the record. With that, I will get started, but I will open it up to any questions of the council. But then I will start with some of our first items requested to be read.
Any questions? There are no questions.
So with that, I am going to start with our first speaker. And it's one of the written comments, and it's from Mr. Paul Lindsay. And I'll start the item, and I'll start up my timer. Mayor Lee, councilmembers Detrick, Hume, Nguyen, and Suen. My name is Paul Lindsay, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove. As it is structured for tonight's hearing, the city will be using certain metrics to define who and how individual residential and commercial renters can qualify for the moratorium on evictions based on non-payment of rent because of COVID-19-related loss of income. They are, one, a definition of substantial decrease; two, a requirement that the tenant notify and document that the failure to pay is due to COVID-19; three, nothing in the ordinance prevents the tenant and landlord from reaching a mutual understanding regarding current and/or past rent; and four, the ordinance has a finite life through May 31 of 2020 unless the city council extends, which would require further public hearings. The new ordinance is reasonably crafted to balance the needs of both tenant and landlord. Landlords should also be aware that there are proposed state and federal resources available. Within the language before you tonight, there's also language regarding utilities. The language specifically states that during the term of this ordinance, the city shall not discontinue service or charge late charges for solid waste or drainage services within the city, and the city manager designated shall take all responsible measures to encourage other utility providers within the city operated by public agencies within the city to refrain from discontinuing or disconnecting services and/or charging late fees related to such utility services. I feel that this is an equal and vital component of the ordinance and should not be overlooked. However, implementation of the ordinance is not enough. The city should take steps to make all renters, residential or commercial, aware of the ordinance, and all landlords, residential or commercial, of the ordinance. I'm not sure exactly how that would be done, but I'm sure the city's staff can craft any number of avenues to ensure public awareness. I want to thank all of you who agreed to reconsider your prior decision. I strongly urge you all to approve this urgency interim ordinance tonight. We simply cannot wait for a non-urgency ordinance to take effect. You owe it to all who live in Elk Grove, whether tenant, landlord, or homeowner. Show us that Elk Grove has a heart. Show us that you care. And sorry, I am kind of getting some messages coming back from me. Are we all right on the system?
Yes. I can hear you loud and clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
With that, I'm going to, all right, it sounds like we are all to go. Let me just check, just to verify. Did get a message coming in. Our next comment's from Jaclyn Moreno. I am writing in support of the moratorium on evictions for small businesses and renters. Due to the health crisis, the government put many mandates in place for our protection. These mandates displaced an overwhelming amount of workers from droves of industries almost overnight through no fault of their own. The last thing we need right now are families on the streets or small businesses out of luck because they can't pay rent. If people are out of work because of the government, then government must put protections in place for those in the community most immediately affected. There are already several things in place to help landlords with more on the way. The federal government announced last week that is suspending all foreclosure actions. In addition, many major banks are offering mortgage relief programs to homeowners, including Bank of America, Capital One, and Wells Fargo. It's time to lead with compassion. I implore you to vote with a moratorium on evictions. And again, I am just going to touch base with the council, that these are comments that were submitted previously, earlier in the day, and routed around to the full council. And I did just want to confirm that the council does want these read back into the record. Beyond just these ones that were submitted earlier and distributed to the full council, I do have a series of emails that have been received since the opening of the meeting on this topic. So just confirming with the council that you'd like me to proceed with reading these into the record.
You know, I'm fine with it being a part of the record, not necessarily reading it in, so long as it's, there's no specific request by the, the one who is submitting the public comment. Members, thoughts?
I agree. I've, I've read all the emails as they've come in in real time.
Likewise, agreed. Thank you.
I've read them as well.
What I would like to put out there, council, is the ones that I have read so far were ones submitted earlier, but they were requested to be read. So I just wanted to confirm that you want to proceed to just the new comments that have been coming in that have not been able to be distributed just due to timing of the meeting.
That's fine. Yes, that is fine. Thank you.
Yes, that's fine.
All right. So what I will be doing is advancing just to those comments that have been received here as the meeting was getting put together and started underway. What we also have is we're working on getting the callers to come in, but we do have enough comments. We'll continue to work on getting those callers to come in. For the comments that have been received via email, and these are the ones that I'll be reading in, this one is from Jeff Durbin. And most of these are fairly brief, and so as terms of the timer, I will be reading through them and then moving on to the next one. I'm not sure we'll need the timer to be going for all of these. From Mr. Jeff Durbin. Good evening. My name is Jeff Durbin. I have attended and commented at an Elk Grove City Council meeting in the past, questioning the safety of wireless 5G. A special thank you to Mayor Lee for his help with the Symposium on 5G EMF and Health, and for his vote to pass Help for Rent Relief. I understand that the public is not able to speak in person for now, so I appreciate the chance to write and have my statement read at the council meeting tonight. I'm a resident of Sacramento County. I'm still unemployed, and I have tried to postpone my second installment on my Sacramento County Secured Property Tax Bill by phoning the office number on my annual tax bill. The recording says that they understand what is going on these days, but they do not have the authority to postpone a payment, and that is still due on the listed date. And that, I will, and that I will still incur an additional penalty if I do not pay on time. I've paid the first installment in November on my credit card, and I still have not been able to find suitable employment in my field. So this is a hardship right now. I keep hearing on the news about wanting landlords to help out tenants by allowing late payments, and Governor Newsom's statements today about relief for late rent and mortgage payments by banks and financial institutions to prevent evictions, but I have heard nothing about some help with property tax payments. I'll forward this request to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, but I wanted to ask the Elk Grove City Council if there's anything in the works already, or if you could please help with the issue and the rent relief bill that could impact a number of people in Elk Grove and Sacramento County. Thank you for your consideration. And that's the, the next comment is from, go ahead.
Jason, well, I mean, under that, since it's directly related, I actually spoke with the assessor this afternoon, and I have an answer on that. Just real quickly, the tax date of April 10th is a statutory date which would require an act by the legislature and the governor to change. It's her understanding the legislative efforts to codify retroactively waiving the late payment penalties and interest is underway. So at this point, the tax collector has not made any announcement. They would do so on their own. So that's, that's the latest that we know right now.
All right. And with that, I will continue on with the public comment from email that's been submitted to date. This is from Mr. Gary Sibner. Regarding item 3.2 on the special meeting agenda to consider an urgency or non-urgency interim ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions and providing relief for utility services in the city of Elk Grove, I am asking very simply for the council to approve this as an urgency measure to provide a temporary moratorium on evictions in the city of Elk Grove. Both residential and commercial tenants are doing what they've been asked and ordered to do by self-isolating and closing their businesses in order to help protect us all from the spread of the virus. This is no fault of their own. They are losing wages and business income needed to pay rent, and without a moratorium, are in danger of being evicted from their homes and businesses. This would be unconscionable and heartless. There does not seem to be any reason to not pass a moratorium, as many other municipalities have already done. Even those council members who are landlords and then may have mortgages on their properties are likely receiving offers of assistance from their lenders regarding obligations of their loans. Do not let the city of Elk Grove be the outlier in this time of crisis and be branded as heartless and unresponsive to its most vulnerable citizens in a time of crisis for everyone. While a non-urgency ordinance would do the same thing, only delayed by up to six weeks, unanimously passing this as an urgency measure rather than non-urgency, it'll demonstrate to the people of Elk Grove and Sacramento County that it takes this crisis seriously, and its concerns for its citizens is paramount. People need to know you have their backs. Please do the right thing. All right. And I believe we have one of our external callers who will actually be coming in via Teams, and so I'm going to be looking to my staff colleague to assist with bringing that caller in. that caller in. And it will be just a pause until we make that connection. Thank you, viewers, for your patience. I think we're just making the final connection. Not quite hearing it, Nicole.
We're ready.
All right, go ahead.
All right, this is Umar Sherghil. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, sir. Please continue.
Thank you. My name is Umar Sherghil. I'm an Elk Grove father of three. First of all, I want to thank the city manager and staff for just going above and beyond, whether it's the council meeting here today, or getting systems operated, or helping folks at the food bank, and raising money. Just my huge appreciation to the city manager and staff for getting all that work done and decreasing suffering in Elk Grove. And thank you to the council members. I know that you've been doing a lot, raising money for the food bank and putting in long hours. And thank you to Councilmember Hume in particular for disclosing his financial interests today as a landlord. I am glad that he has been successful in his investments. I want to go quickly just to the language of the ordinance. I've submitted revisions, which I think are important, and at the, at the risk of wordsmithing, as Councilmember Hume likes to say, in Section 5A, we need to ban also the threat to evict. It is easy for a landlord now to go to a renter and say, "Look, you haven't paid. Your pay was due yesterday. Get out, or I'm going to call the sheriff, and I'm going to go to court." Renters don't know that that's not possible if you pass this ordinance, so we need to include a ban on the threat to evict. For Section 5D1, we should include notice by writing to include text, email, or fax by a renter to a landlord, and allow a 15 days after the due date. And a lot of people are under stress managing different bills, they're going to the hospital, they're taking care of elders. Give them 15 days after the due date to acquire the notice to the landlord and the protections of this act. And also put an exception there that if the renter themselves are ill, if they're in the hospital, that they can use the ordinance as protection not to get evicted. There's no point in talking about this if we're going to evict people that are ill and couldn't get the appropriate notice done. And then finally, for 5D3, the term reasonably able to pay is a typical type of very vague lawyer language that corporate lawyers insert into these types of ordinances that they know they can litigate and take to court, and renters won't have the time or the money to hire those type of corporate lawyers, and they'll lose. And if you include reasonably able to pay, what you're saying is that rich corporate landlords can kick people out by using the strength of litigation. Well, that term should be amended, and I've, I've put the amendment in there, and it should be pay the portion of the rent the tenant determines either they are reasonably able to pay. Folks want to pay their rent, and they will, or there were something else to landlord, but we shouldn't give corporate landlords an out to just destroy this entire ordinance that way. Finally, overall, in passing this ordinance, I think it's fairly clear now that the overwhelming sentiment is to put a pause on residential and commercial evictions. There's a lot of assistance on the way from landlords for public and private lenders, so they don't have to...
Just to chime in, we're at three minutes. We're at three minutes, Mr. Sherghil.
All right, I'll, I'll finish up real quick. If you're, please do the right thing, put aside the lobbying of the campaign contributors and corporate interests. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars that they pay to get you to listen. Please listen to the people of Elk Grove and institute this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is from Kathy Lee, I do believe. It's, sorry, the email that came in is from a shared email source. From Kathy Lee. "Mayor Lee and councilmembers, first, thank you for re-agendizing this item. For the life of me, I cannot understand why so much time and effort is being expended on an issue that should be a slam dunk. So many cities and counties are enacting similar ordinances, and Elk Grove's refusal to create a sister ordinance makes us look uncaring, unsympathetic, mean, and just downright ignorant of what the state, nation, and world is facing. This pandemic is just getting started. The effects will linger for many months and for some many years. Now is the time to reach out to fellow men and extend a hand of compassion. However, our city refuses to do so. My embarrassment for your behavior cannot be put into words. I have rarely agreed with the mayor on any issue, but I stand solidly behind him as he tries to salvage the situation. It does not matter what party you belong to, what your political leanings are. Those ideologies must be set aside. We don't want politics playing its usual game. We want assurances that families will not be evicted. We want assurances that our favorite stores, think Canale Salons, Great Clips, Goodwill Store, Kohl's, Bath &amp; Body Works, Sour Dough Sandwich Shop, and Peony Palace, to name a few, will be able to weather this storm, come out on the other end, and thrive as we all get back to our usual shopping habits. There is no doubt these businesses, if allowed, to hunker down and defer their rents if necessary, will come back strong. No one is asking for handout. They are asking for hand up and an agreement to settle up down the road. I do not like the floated idea that this ordinance be bifurcated, dealing with evictions based on whether you're a residential renter or a commercial small business renter. They are all facing the same issues, and they're all asking the same, for the same protections. Anything less implies residents who pay rent are somehow less important than small businesses who have virtually been shuttered. Both are equally important for a community to rebound and thrive. Both are equally losing income. I see no reason other than spite to treat eviction and protection differently. Regarding the commercial small business, out of the 80 comments read into the record on Monday, March 23rd, I did not find one comment from these commercial landlords. We heard from council about a John Wallace, a landlord of apparently multiple strip malls, but he seems to be silent on the issue, unless, of course, some of our council members were representing him. In today's paper, Mr. Wallace seems to be doing just fine, stating his properties have less than a 6% vacancy rate, and that he continues to work with his tenants. It seems to me that the John Wallaces of this world do not need your help. It is the residents and business owners of this town that are turning to you for your guidance, wisdom, and compassion. Time to show what you are made of and exactly who you represent. It's time for you to start worrying about all the little guys in town. Pass this ordinance, do it tonight, make it effective now, and show some humanity." From Kathy Lee of Elk Grove. If the council will indulge me, just briefly, I do want to comment to the 80 comments. There were numerous comments that were received from Monday night, and some of those did include viewpoints on both sides for renters and landlords. Any of those documents, if there's any member of the public that wishes to see any of those, they can contact myself, the city clerk, at jlyngren@elkrovecity.org, and we can make those documents readily available to individuals. Council, just want to make sure I'm not just broadcasting or have my mute on or anything like that, but I believe we have another caller who is ready to come in. And with that, we will coordinate bringing that caller in.
We're ready. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Nick Feltzer. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Mr. Feltzer.
Great. Hi, my name is Nick Feltzer. I'm a resident of Elk Grove, and I am calling in support of this moratorium on eviction. I mean, a lot of people are looking at rent next week, next Wednesday. A lot of people lost their jobs last week and may not have all their rent. What I'm reading about this federal education is that the unemployment benefits, first of all, won't come for at least three weeks here in California, and the federal stimulus checks probably will take at least four weeks for taxpayers that use direct deposit with the IRS, and as much as four months for taxpayers that get their refunds through a check from the IRS. So I do feel it's important to really, you know, just take a pause, and let's see what comes out of Washington, and how quickly that, you know, we can get the stimulus to people so that people can start paying their rent. And it just makes sense to, you know, to put a pause on eviction until we have a better idea about what is happening in this country. So I won't really take up much more while in support of this measure, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feltzer. Did we have someone on the line? I wanted to make sure all comms are open.
I can hear you.
I can hear you fine.
So I do have a few recorded comments as well for the council, and what I'm going to be doing is using the function to share some files through our Teams meeting. I'm going to start playing some of those currently.
Hi, Jason, this is Connie. The following is my public comment regarding the eviction ordinance. Mayor and council, in its 2004 special report regarding conflict of interest in the city of Elk Grove, the Sacramento County grand jury stated in bold the following. "We urge the citizens of Elk Grove to review our report in determining the adequacy of the performance of their elected and appointed officials," and that means you. Why didn't you, Steve Detrick, and you, Pat Hume, in the spirit of transparency, disclose from the onset of the urgency ordinance that you were landlords here in Elk Grove? By not doing so, you yourself laid the foundation for a perception of a conflict of interest, if not an outright conflict of interest. As also stated by the grand jury in the 2004 report to the city of Elk Grove, city staff, and the Elk Grove City Council, quote, "One court opinion indicates the purpose of Section 1090 prohibition is to remove or limit the possibility of any personal influence, either directly or indirectly, which might bear on an official's decision. It is also intended not only to strike at an actual impropriety, but also strike at the appearance of impropriety. Further, conflict of interest statutes are concerned with what might have happened rather than merely what actually happened. They are aimed at eliminating temptation, avoiding appearances of impropriety, and assuring governmental officers undivided and uncompromised allegiance. The city of Elk Grove Code of Ethics under Responsibility states, 'I avoid actions that might cause the public to question my independent judgment.' In closing, my one-word comment on this agenda item still stands, and that is yes. Please do the right thing here." Hi, Jason, this is Connie. The following is my public comment regarding the eviction ordinance.
Part of me, it's replaying, so...
Mayor and council, in its 2004 special report regarding conflict of interest in...
And I will continue on. We have two more recorded, one that came in and another one that was asked to be played. This is from Mr. Ibrahim Bahir, I believe.
Hello, my name is Ibrahim Bangura, and I'm a constituent here in Elk Grove. I'm just calling to urge the council members to use their power and, and make the decision to vote in favor of the people who will be most impacted by everything that's going on. I think that we are in extremely trying times, and that situation we're in will bring out the worst, but also the best of us. I think the challenge is to act quickly and in the best interest of the community at large. I was recently interviewed on Fox 40 about the position, the vote, when it happened last week, and I also want to stress that people are looking to see how city council members are voting in this critical time. I mentioned that in District 4, people voted Steve Hansen out even though he was the incumbent because of his failing on housing issues. That's the reason that Katie Valenzuela was able to pull off that remarkable upset, and that is likely here as well if leaders do not step up to the plate and stop abdicating responsibility to do what they can to protect the vulnerable in our communities. I hope that this message reaches all it's intended to reach, and I hope that city council members do the right thing today. Hello, my name is Ibrahim Bangura, and I'm a constituent here in Elk Grove. I'm just calling to urge the council members to use their power and, and make the decision to vote in favor of the people who will be most impacted by everything that's going on. I think that we are in extremely trying times, and that situation we're in will bring out the worst, but also the best of us. I think the challenge is to act quickly and in the best interest of the community at large. I was recently interviewed on Fox 40 about the position, the vote, when it happened last week, and I also want to stress that people are...
Is this a technical difficulty, or am I hearing the same message again?
...how city council members are voting in this critical time. I mentioned that in District 4, people voted Steve Hansen out even though he was the incumbent because of his failing on housing issues. That's the reason that Katie Valenzuela was able to pull off that remarkable upset, and that is likely here as well if leaders do not step up to the plate.
I'm still here.
All right. I think what, sorry, we did have some technical difficulties, but we have limited screen access in order to have these items remotely controlled, and it ended up double play, it kind of went on a loop, playing some of those audio playbacks. I apologize for that, but what I will try to do is we'll try, I have one more audio playback, but I was going to go through some of the more written comments that we'd received throughout the course of this afternoon, and so I'll try to go through those, and if you can cue up Nicole, the one from Alimua, and when that one's ready, to play that one in the chamber. But I'll start, go ahead. So I apologize for that. That was part of, a, part of us trying to do this as remote as possible. And what I'll do is carry on with Deborah Cobble's comment. "Honorable mayor and city council, we write to urge you to craft and adopt an urgency ordinance that will provide protection from eviction for residential and small business tenants who may be unable to timely pay their rent due to COVID-19 loss of income. Certainly, a time-limited ordinance that can be revisited and extended if needed is appropriate and likely to cause major hardship to landlords. As a community, we cannot afford to put more families out on the streets, nor lose our small businesses that are the backbone of our economy. Thank you for considering our comments from Debbie Cobble and Mark Nelson." Next comment is from Kay LeBate. It's a brief comment. "Please vote yes in support of the eviction ban to help renters while the federal and state government are offering to help homeowners." Thank you. The next comment is from Stacy Anderson. "Good evening, councilmembers. I'm writing to respectfully request that you adopt an urgency ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on evictions and providing city residents with relief from disconnection and late fees for utilities. Though the latter might take some time for republic services to orchestrate, please don't let the system's current inability to perform such functions deter you from approving this urgency ordinance. I understand that you have the opportunity to consider a similar ordinance that would be non-urgent, but this would greatly delay the ability for tenants to receive the help they need so desperately, that they desperately need now. At first glance, this urgency ordinance may seem to unfairly put landlords at greater financial risk. However, the more and more mortgage lenders offering assistance to borrowers, landlords, are looking to be in a better position to weather the storm. Additionally, the language of this urgency ordinance states that the tenants are to pay at least 50% of rents due, which weeds out those that may be attempting to milk the system. Our small business neighbors are a significant part of the foundation of our city, and they are suffering greatly as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Just yesterday, a representative of Tulie Oil, which operates some service stations in town, informed me that their business has already decreased by 75%. Other small business owners have sadly reported similar or worse statistics. With stay-at-home restrictions taking a grave toll on restaurants, retailers, gyms, and several other service providers, it is imperative that the city intervenes as quickly as possible to help preserve the foundation of Elk Grove. Supporting small business supports residents too, as they employ many people in our community. Citizens have already been doing what they can to assist. We do our best to patronize the businesses that remain open while abiding the orders of social distancing. In the coming days, in an effort to further support our community, we're launching a website, westelkrove.com, which will highlight some of the small business neighbors who remain open and ready to serve the community, but that won't be enough. We need your help too. The Sacramento City Council has wisely and compassionately approved such an ordinance. I urge you to please follow suit, abide by the recommendations of city staff, and approve this urgency ordinance for Elk Grove tonight. Time is of the essence, and now more than ever, the residents of our city are relying on your leadership to help us get through this difficult time so that maybe we may realize the promise of a bright future." That concludes Stacy Anderson's comments. I am getting some feedback, and that Alimua is the next one. I think we're ready to play that recording, and I'll see if we can get that to play through.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Alimua. As you are aware, the coronavirus pandemic has created an environment of instability surrounding the health and finances of our residents. We have entered into an unprecedented era for our city. Many Elk Grove families and small businesses are struggling. I encourage this leader's leadership to take steps to ensure that the families are not displaced and forced into homelessness, and that small businesses do not end up permanently closed. There are approximately 85,000 Elk Grove citizens in the labor force, of which 53,000 of them work in the private sector. The Economic Policy Institute estimates a 4.2% loss of jobs to the private sector workforce across California by June of this year. Applying this assumption to Elk Grove citizens in the private sector labor force would equate to approximately 2,200 jobs that Elk Grove citizens would be losing. While these are crude estimates, our city should not take these concerns lightly and make best efforts to prevent any of our residents to be displaced and forced into homelessness. As you are deliberating tonight on this item, please remember that Elk Groveans take care of each other. In time of crisis, Elk Groveans come together and help our neighbors. Whether it be sharing a roll of toilet paper or delivering groceries to seniors, we show up for each other. Our city will become stronger, safer, and healthier when we continue to show up and represent for one another in moments of crisis. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council-
Mayor and city council members, as I reflected back on your previous policies regarding city economic incentives and efforts to bring jobs to the community, I have not forgotten the $3.3 million given to the California Correctional Healthcare Services and developer PABIS to bring the jobs to our city. Not too long after the initial incentive, another incentive, $81,088, was awarded to create an additional 64 jobs. In justifying this giveaway, the council suggested that the employees lived in Elk Grove and would not have to commute. However, the staff report noted that out of approximately 1,600 total employees, only 375 live in Elk Grove. Another example of developer favors was the advancing of $16.4 million to provide the infrastructure to the undeveloped SEPA area, with the justification that it would create economic development. What has been approved and built is more homes. Another example of developer favors has been the shift, the cost of constructing the connector from the developers who will benefit from it to the taxpayers in the form of a supplemental sales tax. While council members Hume and Soon have been diligently pursuing this agenda as members of the Sacramento Transit Board, the truth is that this so-called expressway will result in new shopping centers and new subdivisions and many traffic signals similar to Watt Avenue. This all done to profit the building industry and landowners. This now brings us to compassion. You cannot measure compassion with a dollar sign. We need our small business owners to sustain long-term economic development and the quality of life that each deserves. I cited examples of questionable spending on economic development goals, and this urgency ordinance will not cost a city one penny. I urge you to take off your special interest hats in making this decision. Please consider the lasting impacts of your decision, laid off employees, and the inevitable loss of sales tax revenue to the city, the real possibility of an uptick in eviction proceedings, and more vacant retail strip centers. Again, this is an opportunity to demonstrate your support of our small business owners who contribute so much to making this a wonderful community and place to call home. This is Lynn Wheat, and I thank you for this opportunity.
And with that, city council, that, that's the audio comments. I still do have a handful of email-submitted comments that have come in through the course of the night. I have about seven left for item 3.2, and they are fairly brief. I will start with the comments from Mr. Chris Gonzalez. And the comment is brief. I urge you all to vote yes to pass the eviction ban in the current crisis. Thank you, from Chris Gonzalez. The next is from Elise Custisak, and she also says, hi, please vote yes to pass the eviction ban tonight. The next comment is from Christine Smith. I was saddened to see our city council reject the proposal to halt evictions during this pandemic crisis. This was a shameful act and showed a total lack of empathy for people they're supposed to represent. Do better and stop the indifference. Walk a mile in someone else's shoes and do the right thing. The next comment is from Winty Singh. From Winty Singh to the Elk Grove City Council, I am an Elk Grove resident and am concerned about residents who are losing their livelihoods during this public health crisis. In these times of great instability, I implore the city to enact a temporary moratorium on evictions and to work with county, state, and federal departments in assembling comprehensive resources to support landlords, renters, and owners. To push more people in the streets who already are struggling with income due to the pandemic can only magnify the disaster. People need shelter to shelter in place, and as such, we need a unique strategy to deal with unique times to avoid exasperating the crisis, from Winty Singh. And I have a brief comment. The next is from Maureen Craft, as sent by Kendra Lewis. And the comment from Maureen, I support a yes vote on the moratorium for Elk Grove residents and small businesses. This is the time for support and compassion for all of our citizens and business owners. And I have a comment from Kimberly Vatal. Hello, my name is Kimberly Stewart Vatal, and I'm a renter, and I've been living at the same rental property for the last five years. I have five kids, some of which you may have seen at previous city council meetings. We are among the thousands of rental housing residents of Elk Grove. I've been a resident of Elk Grove for over 20 years and do not intend to leave. What will happen when we are evicted due to loss of wages from the coronavirus? What will happen to our neighbors? The city council has been given the power by Governor Gavin Newsom to decide if we will get the assistance we need to stay in our homes. I have looked at today's agenda, and it appears the issue is not being discussed. It appears a lot of money is being thrown around for improvements and future projects, but the time is now to be helping our neighbors, your friends, your families. How can we contain a virus when the rental properties start evictions? You have the power to put on, hold on rental payments. People with mortgage payments are getting assistance. Where is the help for those most at risk in our loving city? Why should any company or person be allowed to profit from this crisis? There is a reason rent controls had to be put in place. Some landlords are predatory and must be told what to do in order to do the right thing for their tenants. It is your job here and now to do that. We cannot stay home if we have no home. I live in a community of 67 month-to-month apartments. Without outside controls, the company that owns these apartments will do all they can to get as much money from us as possible. In fact, when rent controls activated this year, some people saw their rents lower due to the price gouging of the managing company. What will stop them from evicting us all and raising the rent for new tenants, thereby profiting from the COVID-19 crisis? I hope you will make a decision that keeps us in our homes and eases the worry of our community, from Kimberly Stewart Vatal. And I have a comment from Andrew F., I believe it's Andrew Fong is the comment. It looks like he had an attachment saying this is what his landlord sent him in regards to this decision. They are not willing to work with people and are threatening eviction. This is why we need protection. So, and what he sent, I think, is just kind of a correspondence that he had with his landlord. And that will be the comments submitted for item 3.2. Let me have one last look, but that would conclude the entirety of the comments. And again, just for the viewing public, if anyone is interested in receiving any of this correspondence, it can be made available by the Office of the City Clerk by emailing myself, Jason Lindgren, jlyngren@elkgrovecity.org, and I turn it over to the council.
All right. Thank you, sir. And at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Council deliberation in direction.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Soon.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to just, again, thank everyone for their comments and weighing in on this issue. You know, I just want to just start off by saying that this council, this is not a heartless council. I think we try to approach everything in a thoughtful manner. Things are just changing very rapidly, daily, since we first considered this item. And I hear everybody out there. I think, you know, the, we've heard from, from tenants that are worried about unscrupulous landlords, and we've heard from landlords that are worried about unscrupulous tenants. But I think what's paramount right now is just peace of mind. We've got a lot going on. This crisis is like none others, Councilmember Hume mentioned earlier. This is, this is something definitely new, something we've never faced as a country. And so it's more important than ever that we stick together. And while we wanted to be thoughtful and trying to help everybody, peace of mind is the most important thing, I think, right now. And so I am happy to support this, this ordinance as we consider it in an urgent fashion. I appreciate the additions that the city attorney has made. And, you know, if, if, if necessary, I'm happy to parcel out and split it to consider at least the residential community, a portion of it as a, as an urgency. I would, I would put that motion forward at this time and ask for folks' support on that. And then happy to have a separate conversation about the commercial side. But again, I think at this point in time, peace of mind is what our residents want. We know there is help coming and more meaningful help from the federal government. We have, we are continuing to work within our own community to see what, what services and support we can provide, and we will continue to do that. But, you know, though we know the courts are closed, the sheriff has stated he will not enforce evictions, all those things, nonetheless, it seems that, you know, having something like this in place seems to give folks peace of mind. And, and if that's, if that's, you know, if that will give them peace of mind, then that's, I'm happy to support that. So I'll, I'll put that motion forward with, on the residential portion of it as an urgency measure. Thank you for now.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll go next, Mary Lee. This is Ellen. And, you know, Councilmember Soon said it, right, in which he says this changes daily. As a matter of fact, it changes hourly. And as leaders of the community, we have a responsibility to protect everyone. I think it's safe to say, though, that of all of us here on this council, I work the closest to this, this community, because I run a social services organization that provides direct supportive services to our community. And they come into my office asking for supportive services specifically around rent due to loss of job lately, as we all know. Not only do I feel their pain and I understand it, because growing up, my family struggled to make rent, and we feared eviction. I want to thank Councilmember Hume for sharing his experience, because it gives us the opportunity to hear from another, another perspective, hearing from the other side. But I also understand that not everyone is like a landlord like Councilmember Hume. As we heard earlier, there were a couple of comments that Mr. Lindgren read where the landlord said they weren't willing to work with the tenants and that they have already threatened eviction, which is why I am a huge advocate for supportive services around rent, because it benefits both parties, both the landlord and the tenant. Right before this call here, I went to my office and I looked at what we had left for supportive services around rent. And as folks are listening on this call, as it turns out, I still have some funding left out of my office. It's in Sacramento, but we do assist families in Elk Grove. So if anybody's listening, if you were laid off, and if you need assistance for rent, please call my office, 916-324-6202. While we're closed to the public, we are doing these over the phone and over email, and we can assist you with that. And so, you know, that being said, I support, and I'll second if that was a motion, Councilmember Hume's motion. I think he, one, made a motion to approve this ordinance, but also talked about splitting it. Is that correct, Councilmember Hume, the commercial and the resident side, and having a separate conversation for both?
That wasn't me. That was Councilmember Soon.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Soon?
Yes, that was me. Councilmember Soon.
May, mayor, members of the council, it's up to the council, this is John Hobbs, your city attorney. Certainly, you can proceed how you like, but I might suggest, before you start making motions or seconding motions, that all the council members have a chance to weigh in, and then you can more properly craft the motion that you want based on their comments. But it's up to you how you want to proceed.
All right.
Thank you for that, city attorney, because I actually have a couple more questions before we can consider the language in the ordinance, if I may.
Can I go before you, since you had about 10 minutes earlier?
Sure.
Now, first, Pat, I want to commend you. A lot of the points that you brought up are mirror exactly what my position was going to be in many of the comments I was going to have. As far as disclosure goes, there was a question whether I was a landlord or not. Yes, I am. I've been a landlord for five years. I have a grandmother and a single, and their single daughter, who's got a young child, and they've been great tenants. And I've recently checked in with them, and they're doing well. And both their careers are still active. In fact, having to put in overtime because of everything that's going on. I would like to, you know, again, thank all the residents, businesses, and property owners, you know, that have sent us phone calls and emails, so we can value both sides of this issue. And again, thank you to staff for doing exactly what we asked you to do last week. You've looked at all the federal, state, county, and local programs that can help with the residents, businesses, and property owners. And there are, you know, there's, and as I mentioned, there's been so many changes over the last week. You know, we were, I felt we were really trying to jump the gun last week, and I think it's really paid off waiting. There's been so many changes and improvements in the programs that have been rolled out that there's $100 billion to boost sick leave and unemployment, and healthcare, and supplemental health care that's already been approved, another $2 trillion that hopefully, if it hasn't already been approved, will be either done tonight or before the week is over. One of the items that was a big concern for me that wasn't addressed last week was, if there's a complaint, how is it going to be handled? Well, those issues have all been resolved, that this will be treated very much like a code enforcement issue. Our code enforcement team will do the review of it, and if there has to be an independent review, we have consultants that are already on our reserved list to help the code enforcement with these, this emergency, proposed urgency ordinance. And as I mentioned earlier, since most of this won't apply till April 1st, it wasn't as urgent, it's called an urgency ordinance, and there's a reason for that, because it goes into effect immediately, but the date of the urgency was not last week. So I'm, you know, I really appreciate- So I'm, you know, I really appreciate the comments from my fellow council members. And I think from what I've seen for in the last week with the changes. I'm willing to support this as well. There's been some great modifications, I think, to make the ordinance even better. This week than it was last, and look forward to hearing the rest of deliberation.
Councilman Hume?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Detrick. First of all, I just wanted to clarify. My position and request to bifurcate. Commercial and residential relative to Kathy Lee's comments. She implied or made it sound like I wanted to do that so that I could not. Consider the residential component and only look at the commercial component. And actually, my intention was exactly the opposite. I wanted to recognize that. People under the perceived stress of losing their home is a much more dire situation that needed to be. Handled to offer that peace of mind that Councilmember Soon was talking about. I have a couple of questions, though, and the first is with respect to the late fees charges on the utilities. We have a motion and a second on the table, but I don't think that issue was addressed and it is still a concern to some people, but. City Attorney Hobbs, is there a legal timeframe? From rent being due to before it's considered late to where a. Three-day payer quit or unlawful detainer eviction proceedings can, can proceed?
Yes, there is. It's largely governed by contract of the parties. And so oftentimes, in both commercial and residential leases. There will be a grace period. Five days is not unusual. So typically, using the five-day. Example, rent is due on the first, late on the fifth. So on the sixth, a landlord could serve a three-day notice to pay or quit. Then three days later, which would be the ninth, 10th would be the day after that. The landlord could institute an unlawful detainer eviction proceeding. Now, if there were no grace period there, if you just had a straight time as of the essence, you must pay on this date. Lease, then rent would be late and due on the first of the month. But it's not at all unusual. I'm sure some of you have experience with that, that you have a grace period because things happen. Five days is not unusual. Once they are late, though, they then have three days to pay or quit. Quit means to vacate the premises. They have to move out. If they don't do either one of those, then the landlord can proceed to an unlawful detainer eviction. Court proceeding. Those are expedited proceedings. The only issue in those court proceedings at trial. And use the term trial somewhat loosely because they usually don't last more than an hour. Is the right to possession. That's where this ordinance comes in. And those work their way through the courts. So I may be answered a little bit more than you were asking, Councilmember Hume. The lawyerly answer is it depends, and it depends on what the agreement between the parties is, but it's usually has five, sometimes more grace period.
Okay. Yeah, I was only familiar with what I, you know, my experience has been. Second question, or next question, rather, is. With respect to the non-emergency ordinance. With the original reading and the second reading, and then the enactment, it would take it out to May 8th. Is there a mechanism in place that we could have the second reading? Prior to April 8th, regular council meeting so that the ordinance would take effect prior to May 8th?
Unfortunately, there's not. And here's the reason why. That's governed by state law. So under state law. For a non-urgency ordinance, a non-urgency ordinance can only be passed, which is a second read, at a regular meeting. This is a special meeting, even though it's taking place on a regular meeting night, the way it was agendized, it's a special meeting. So we can do our first read at the special meeting, but the second read, the enactment, has to happen at a regular meeting. So the next regular meeting is April 8th. That's as soon as you'd be able to have your second read.
Okay. Thank you. And then is there anything? In this ordinance or? What if there was a situation where a tenant was not current? And in good standing as of, you know, pick a date, January 1st, February 1st, whatever. December 31st. Is there anything that addresses that? In other words, if there's an ongoing tenant landlord dispute? Completely unrelated to?
So an ongoing tenant landlord dispute, I think Vice Mayor Detrick kind of touched upon this. This, this really, in a typical rent cycle, rent is typically due on the first, not always, but that's typical. This really becomes important as of April 1st. So if you have, for instance, Councilmember Hume, a tenant who is chronically late for reasons unrelated to the, to the COVID pandemic. Then that would still be eligible for your standard unlawful detainer eviction. This only applies. If you pass it tonight, effective tonight going forward, for any rent payments that were not paid as a result of the COVID virus pandemic. And so if somebody has not been paying rent and doesn't otherwise qualify under the ordinance. Of an impact due to the pandemic and they have an attendant loss of income, meaning the qualifications of the ordinance. They would not get the protection under this because it's not related to the pandemic.
Okay. All right. Well, I agree with the comments that have been said as far as this is better legislation this week than we had in front of us last week. And, you know, I think it's unfortunate that some of the comments were characterized in some of the way that's been reporting out. That the council somehow voted to not stop evictions. You know, as I said in my comments earlier, evictions are literally impossible at this point. And so. But to the fact that we are trying to provide the relief, I think that there's a good motion on the table at this point.
Councilmember Hume, can I, can I ask a question before we move on? You mentioned, and I don't know if you meant to come back to it or not, the late fees and the charges for utilities. Did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, just that there's still a concern that's hanging out there that was not addressed in the original motion in the original second.
Okay.
So I guess I'm asking the motioner and the seconder if they, if they thought of that.
Yeah, I'll, I remember there was a comment issued by Republic Services with the, with the willingness to. To delay late fees for trash services. Under the same conditions, similar conditions that were stipulated here in the ordinance. So.
That's not, that's not what I understood. What I understood is that their billing system cannot remove. The imposition of late charges off of a billing unless they were to go into every individual account.
Yeah, but there was, there was a later. Later notice from Lisa Avila, from the rep mentioning their, their. Their willingness to, to delay. Or Jason Lindgren, do you have it?
Yeah. Soon, oh, I'm sorry. I think I can maybe address the, the point that Councilmember Soon is touching upon, if I might. Would you like me to address that?
Please.
Okay, so there was a later comment that came in, it looks like this afternoon around 3:30. From a representative of Republic, Lisa Avila. And what she suggested. Was a sort of a compromise position, which is if we're going to. Waive late charges, that we ask the person who is subject to those late charges to make a similar showing as is being made for the. Delay of rent. For instance, they have to make a showing that they had a loss of income of more than 20%. And they have to give similar notices to the utility provider, essentially the city. Showing that they're not going to be able to make the rent, essentially mirror the same type of showing. That is being made for rent. She is suggesting that that be infused in the ordinance. And if that's the will of the council, we can make those changes.
I will amend my motion to include those, those criteria.
Can I clarify with the maker of the motion? Because it wasn't clear to me if. Councilmember Soon, you were making a motion to approve the ordinance as drafted with your amendment just a moment ago? Or was it only as to residential?
It's only as to residential at this time. The urgency, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So your motion, so I can apologize for belaboring the point. The motion is for only residential. Plus, the changes suggested by the Republic Representative Lisa Avila with respect to the showing. Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
All right, this is.
I think you did characterize correctly what Lisa. From Republic had sent over relative to. To those items, definitely following similar to the. Rental side that we're looking at. What, what is the recommendation? On the commercial side, if we're separating it out? I haven't heard anything separate on that.
Are we, I'm assuming we could, we could take action on this and then come back to the commercial. Is that, is that allowed, Jason or John?
Do you mean come back another night or come back after this?
No, no, just after this.
No, what I would suggest that you do, if you're gonna, if you're gonna move the motion, or excuse me, move the ordinance forward with exclusion of commercial, then. The ordinance is essentially closed. Then we have an ordinance. Then if you wanted to change it to do something with commercial. You could give us direction, we can bring that back. Or if you want to wait until we're done and have a discussion about what to do with commercial, assuming we can make those changes tonight, depends on how elaborate they might be. Then you could wrap it all into one. If you want to try to get consensus as to. Is everyone sufficiently on board with this as is, as a non-binding consensus or straw vote like we've done before. You could do that, but once we take a motion and a second and vote on the ordinance, the ordinance is closed. We'd have to, we'd have to start with a new ordinance that would have to come back.
That's what my concern is.
Okay, well, that's a good clarification, Vice Mayor Detrick. Thank you.
What was that, what was that, Vice Mayor?
That's what my concern is. I think, I think we, we can, we can address them both separately as what we're looking for content. But I think we need to vote on both of these as a package. So if it is going to be an urgency ordinance, then it covers both of them.
Okay.
As well as the utilities.
Okay, then, then, yeah, then, then. Yeah, then let's, let's visit the, obviously the mayor wants, wants to weigh in, but I would say we'll visit the commercial side next.
So is that, is that a withdrawal of your motion, or do you still want to keep that on the floor for now?
I'll keep it on the floor for now, depending on how our conversation goes on the commercial side.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, Mr. Hobbs, this is Mayor Steve Lee. Quick question. You know, I've, I've heard some of the suggestion, particularly from Mr. Shergill, that I think that. Would make this ordinance a little bit more protective of residential. If those changes were adopted tonight, would, would that add in the delay at all?
You could, you can make those changes tonight if that's what you want to do. I'm happy to go through those changes if you like. I have some thoughts on that, if you like.
Yeah, can you go over those?
Yeah. So the first change from Mr. Shergill is that you prohibit not just actual eviction, but also the threat of eviction. And that's not an unreasonable suggestion. There would be an issue as concerns enforcement of that because then it causes. Staff and others to have to determine whether or not there was actually a threat of an eviction. If, if there's an. That's easy because that'll be documented. So there, there's going to be an enforcement problem with that. I think Mr. Shergill's concern is it might deter landlords who may be threatening. And it might, but I think that's going to be some difficulty to enforce. It's a will of the council if you want to put that in there or not. With respect to the, he added. Phrasiology that says by text, email, fax or in writing. Text, email or fax would constitute a writing. If you want to clarify that those are examples of acceptable writings, that's fine. It's not necessary. Those would be writings anyways. There's a policy call with respect to whether or not you want to allow the tenant to. Be able to pay rent after the 15, 15 days after it's due. As currently drafted. The ordinance says that they must notify the landlord before rent is due. Mr. Shergill is suggesting that the. Tenant may make that notification up to 15 days after rent is due. That's a policy call. I'll offer no opinion on that. That's up to the council. The next suggestion of unless unable to do so due to illness. If we're going to include something like that, I would suggest that you have illness related to the COVID-19 virus. Because otherwise illness is pretty broad, and I don't know if that's what you want to do to exempt any illness. The last one with respect to whether or not the tenant reasonably can make rent payments. We already have a metric in the ordinance right now. Of 50%. If a tenant makes a 50% rent payment, they are presumed to have paid what they reasonably can. It's a rebuttable presumption on either side, but we set that as a benchmark to say that if you make your rent payment of 50%. You're presumed to have made a reasonable rent payment. The reason that we put that in there. Was so that we eliminate some of the issues about whether or not it is a landlord's determination or the tenant's determination. It just sets a benchmark for the parties to say, okay, well, this is the, this is kind of the benchmark of what. Would be a reasonable rent. The suggestion from Mr. Shergill is that the tenant unilaterally has the ability to make that determination. That's fine if that's what the council wants to do. It's certainly not, in my opinion, illegal. Just shifts the balance over to the landlord to make, or excuse me, the tenant to make that determination as opposed to setting some sort of objective met, metric, or excuse me, metric. I think that's all his comments.
You know, it does seem like it's extra added protection for residential tenants. I do have an interest, but I am certainly looking for council support on this. The, the other remark that I did have is, you know, I'm, I'm real proud of this council. The fact that all of you are very supportive in having a special meeting to bring this back to our regularly scheduled meeting. Says a lot about each and every one of you. And as I've said before. As I've gotten to know each and every one of you, I know you volunteer to serve because you are individuals that. Have your heart in it, and it makes me very proud, and I look forward to seeing this through tonight. But I am raising the question to the council member, asking for support on the amendments that Mr. Hobbs just went over.
I, I feel like it's fine the way it is. I feel like we've made enough edits and changes to it already, and I don't see. Any value in adding those additional edits, Mr. Lee, but that's just me.
I think the edits create additional confusion.
I just received a message that two, two million, $2 trillion. Proposal from the feds passed. So all that, that money will be coming down, so there should be no problem for people to be able to pay their rent.
Thank you, members, for your consideration.
I'd like to move the discussion on to the commercial side.
Okay, Mr. Hobbs, do we need to do a vote on the residential side first, or do we move into the commercial side and then do a vote for both?
I would suggest that you wait and have a discussion on all of it and then make a determination on the entirety of the ordinance. So I would wait.
Okay, so let's start with the commercial. Councilmember Soon, you want to go?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate your, your comments earlier as well. I personally, I, I feel the same way on, on the commercial side. I would be willing to. Move this as an urgent item as well, but my, my previous comments stand on the commercial side. In regards to commercial as well. And so I'll defer to my other colleagues and see what, what the sentiment is.
Okay. Anyone?
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm willing to, to do it as an urgency ordinance. I'm, I'm open to the idea of it and I'll. Listen to what my colleagues have to say about that, but there are a couple of things that I'd like to see added in there that strengthen it. To, to be sure that, that this, this protection ends up where it's intended. There was some suggested edits that had something to do with the. The volume sales. Not at the location, but for the overall company. I mean, generally what I want to do is that this is, this is protecting small mom and pops and it's not giving, say, a national tenant the opportunity to just. Renegotiate lease terms, even if they're only temporary.
Ken, anyone else?
I, I support that, Councilmember Hume. I believe we received input about a certain, certain threshold. Those larger tenants have business interruption insurance. And is, is our understanding. So I don't think that, you know, this should need to apply to them. We were always trying to make sure our. Our local folks were taken care of, whether, whether they were tenants, small business tenants, or, or the, the small shopping center folks. Landlords on those, on those sides, so.
So Councilmember Soon and, and Hume, if I could address that point and refresh everyone's recollection on the comments. On that point, we did receive a comment that. that this protection for the tenant should not apply if a business has over $25 million in gross sales, and that would be national sales. So that's going to protect, excuse me, exclude from protection your national chains, and that might address the points that you gentlemen were making.
Yes, tha- thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I recall the, the $25 million figure. I'm just not sure if that's the appropriate threshold or not. That's why I was, I was throwing out, um, different language.
All right.
Ken? Vice Mayor? Councilmember Hume?
I, I can support that as well, too.
Yeah, I, I'm support the change.
Can, can we clarify what the change is? I'm not sure, because I heard a couple of different things there.
Councilmember Hume, you want to summarize?
Well, um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't know that I have anything better than the, the figure that was put forward, if that's where everyone's comfort level is. I was just wondering if that was the right, right amount to, to peg it to.
Yeah, I, I think you're going in the right direction. Um, you know, I, I hear your saying, and I, I would support that concept. Um, but, um, Mr. Hobbs, are you, are you trying to narrow down to what specific threshold that would be?
Um, well, that is a threshold, and I have no opinion as to whether or not that's the correct threshold or not. It was just one of the comments. So, uh, it's the council's discretion, uh, what you want to put in there. I don't have an opinion on that.
Okay.
Do we have any idea how many of our businesses even come close to that threshold?
I could guess, but I don't think a guess is going to help you. But my guess is you're, you're going to hit the national chains only with that McDonald's, Target, things like that.
Yeah, but even the McDonald's are in, individual proprietors.
If they're a franchise, they might be, but there's some corporate stores. I'm not sure which ones are which here in Elk Grove.
Because that, I mean, that 25 million is a big ticket.
Well, then, then you have to look at what, what's the risk? What's the likelihood that, that those tenants, uh, aren't, aren't going to be, you know, have a, a separate workable agreement with, with their landlord, that this wouldn't apply anyway?
I think the risk is, and I can, I can tell you this from experience, that when you have someone who is considered an anchor-type tenant, whether that's in a smaller commercial property or a larger commercial property, they know that they, they wield a lot of weight to the overall success, and they're going to use that leverage to, to get, um, something that's better to their bottom line. And I'm not putting this over on any particular company or any particular location. I mean, this would be a national play to, you know, increase their bottom line, uh, with respect to their shareholders.
Yeah, I agree with you there. I, I'm just saying, I don't know that they would need this protection is all. Such that exempting them from this, this protection, I don't think would, would have a material effect on them. I think the, the landlord, uh, a landlord would be foolish not to be working with them anyway.
I'm, I'm not, my, my concern isn't the landlord's willingness. My concern is the, the tenant's willingness. In other words, so, you know, you take any of the names that have been thrown out already, if they can show a, a loss of income due to COVID-related loss of business, they claim protection under this ordinance. I'm sorry, my, my, uh, my thing just said I got kicked out of the call. Did I get cut off?
No, no, you're here.
I am.
Yeah, yeah. So are you, I, I was going with you, I was going, what I thought I heard you say is wanting to add some language, uh, about, uh, exempting, um, large corporations. If you want them included, then I, I'm not vested either way. We could, we could just...
Well, I, I, I mean, it's a, it's a language issue. I'm talking about exempting them from the protection. Is that...
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, um, I just sent some very unscientific research on Google, and I don't know if this is helpful, but to use the, uh, the two businesses that I threw out, McDonald's and Target, according to Google, which may not be reliable, McDonald's sales last year were 21 billion, Target was 77 billion. That was their gross sales. So it's a very high number compared to what we're talking about right now. I have no idea what their, their profit or their, their expenses were, but that's just to give you a, a sense.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
So I don't, I don't want to spend too much time on this. I mean, if we want to peg a number, I'm fine with pegging a number. But then the other thing, you know, when it comes to, uh, commercial lease rather than a residential lease, do we, do we want to tighten the language with respect to the repayment plan? I, I'm just trying to avoid a situation where, um, either party, uh, is held up for a process that, that is functionally not working.
Councilmember Hume, are you suggesting a shorter repayment plan or a longer repayment plan for, or a different repayment plan, I guess, for the commercial tenants?
First of all, I just want to say it's, it's a very different experience to be talking to you all while I'm just staring at the computer screen, but...
You and me both.
But I, 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 yeah, I, I would say, I don't want, I don't want the process to have to play out to the ultimate, um, four-month extension in a situation where, you know, the, the, the business or the landlord are not acting in good faith prior to that. I guess I'm going back to, I, I just, I have a feeling that, um, that, that, that this arrangement will be, will be hashed out irrespective of what we call out in this ordinance. Should we have like a over and out at the end when we're done talking?
No.
The pause is single word.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Hume. I, I think, first of all, I think the intent of this is, in terms of four, and correct me, um, City Attorney Hobbs, if, if I'm wrong, but I think the intent of this is, you know, you, you have up to four equal payments, 120 days, make four equal payments. Even if, you don't have to wait till that fourth month or 120th day. If you are, if you are late in that first payment, you're in violation. So it, it, you're not, it's not dragging you out, so to speak. And then, to your point, I also believe that the, something, the likelihood of something getting worked out, uh, irrespective of this agreement is highly likely. And thus, I'm getting back to, uh, peace of mind for, for folks. And, uh, um, you know, I, I think perfect may be the enemy of good in this case, and I don't know we can ever even get to perfect. Uh, we've gotten better, but I don't know that we'll ever get to perfect.
So let me ask the city attorney, is that your understanding of the language? Then city attorney is, is the, I'm sorry, were we talking over one another?
No, go ahead.
Um, is that your understanding of the language? Is that, that the first missed payment of, of the repayment schedule that had been agreed upon is a, is a new default of, of lease terms?
Yes. And so if you look at the last sentence, um, which is, was, was added since the last discussion to clarify this point, it says a landlord, this is a subsection E of section five, it says a landlord may commence eviction unlawful detainer proceedings as to any person who fails to make the payments as provided herein. So if there's four equal payments, the person misses the first payment, it would be a default allowing the landlord to pursue an eviction action at that point. So you wouldn't have to wait the entire four months if there's a default.
My apologies, I missed that edit.
That's all right. I didn't point it out, so. My apologies.
Okay, where, where are we at?
So here, if I can sort of summarize where we, I don't know if we have consensus or even a motion, but if I could summarize where I think we might be, and then any of the council members can, can chime in. Um, here are the changes that I seem to have up for on the board, is the late fees for utilities, we would infuse the same standard as the rest of the ordinance, essentially good cause standard related to COVID with the same notice requirements. Uh, there's a suggestion that businesses with $25 million or more in annual sales would not be entitled to protection under this ordinance, the idea being that you would capture the mom and pop, so to speak. And then harkening back to early on in this discussion to Councilmember Hume's comment on subsection G, that the defense of the unlawful detainer action would only apply to those entitled to protection under this ordinance. I would suggest, with your permission, that I make that clarification. So those are the three changes that I have. Um, and if that's acceptable, I can, you can make the motion, we can pass the ordinance tonight with direction to me to revise the ordinance to put those into effect and, and craft the exact language, which I can do pretty easily. Um, that's, that's what I have on the table. Certainly, the, the council has to be okay with that. Um, as an urgency ordinance, it takes four fifths. As a regular ordinance, it only takes three.
So I, I will, uh, you know, uh, uh, accept the, the, those, I don't want to say changes, but the, what you, how you couch it or summarize it.
Councilmember Sun, could you hold on a second?
Yeah.
Because what my concern is, is, is the national chain issue, because you, you could, you could be a franchisee of a national chain, and, and you may do $2 million a year, but the corporation may do a total book of business of in the billions, but that's not what your franchise is doing. So I think we need to be a little careful how that's worded.
So, and then let me just offer a suggestion for the council, um, reacting to that, Vice Mayor Detrick, if it's a will of the council, what I could do is write in an exclusion to the exclusion that says that that exclusion would not apply to a franchisee. I don't know if that addresses your concern, um, but then it would apply only to, you know, first, for McDonald's, for instance. Uh, McDonald's has corporate stores, they have franchisees, so it wouldn't apply to a McDonald's franchisee. They would still get protection, unless they did 25 million, of course.
No, that's perfect.
Agreed. So...
Let me, let me just run through the changes, and if, if, uh, Councilmember Sun seems to be the maker of the motion on this one, so I'll defer to him on that. But, but, so the, the changes are the late fees would apply the same standard as we have for the rest of the ordinance. Essentially, you have to show your loss of income was related to COVID and give the same notice, um, same notice provisions would apply as the rest of the ordinance. Any business that does $25 million or more, uh, in gross sales would not be entitled to protection, with the exception that that exception would not apply to franchisees. And then the clarification on G about the defense for unlawful detainers. Those are the changes on the table.
Yes, and so then I would, I would add to my motion, my original motion on the residential side, the commercial, um...
Can, can I offer a suggestion for your motion?
Okay.
That you rescind your prior motion, and you make a motion to introduce the ordinance as modified by the city attorney?
Okay, I rescind my original motion, motion, and, and make a substitute motion, uh, as modified by the city attorney for both the residential and commercial aspects in an urgency fashion.
Second.
And utilities?
Yeah, he cap, he captured for the late fees.
We're, we're covering the utilities. We'll have the good cause, um, standard put in the utility section as well, Vice Mayor Detrick.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have a motion. I think I heard a second. Was that...
Right.
Yeah, Councilwoman Hume. All right, you got a motion second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, right?
Yep, yeah, we will be doing this via roll call. So for that vote, Councilmember Wen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Sun?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
All right, uh, next item.
With that, that'll take us on to item 3.3, which is consider a resolution establishing a policy and procedures for modifying, reducing, and/or suspending the city's transit services during a declared emergency event.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the city council. This is Mike Costa, Transit System Manager. Can everyone hear me okay?
Indeed.
Thank you. With the current county and statewide state home orders in place in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, as you know, many nonessential businesses and services have been shut down or have shifted to online or teleworking practices. While essential services such as public transit have remained operational, COVID-19 has had a significant impact to public transit in a manner that has caused many transit operators to consider modifying and/or reducing services in response to passenger ridership decline and bus operator availability. The city of Elk Grove's system-wide fixed route weekday transit ridership has decreased by over 70% in the last week, and in daily discussions with the city's current transit provider, Sacramento Regional Transit District, it is anticipated that the city may experience unforeseen bus operator shortages that could impact transit services in the near future should current conditions and orders continue. The city does not currently have any policy or procedures in place to address this type of situation. If approved tonight, the proposed policy and procedures contained in this agenda would provide the city manager with broad authority to make modifications, reductions, and/or suspensions necessary to the city's transit services in response to a declared emergency event such as the current COVID-19 event. This authority would allow the city manager to direct staff to make service modifications as a result of ridership decline, reduced bus operator availability, availability, and/or any other public health and safety reason during a declared emergency event. Three broad levels of service changes are identified in the proposed policy and procedures that can be considered based on specified trigger mechanisms that determine their implementation. Please refer to pages three and four of your staff report for more information regarding these service levels and trigger mechanisms. In summary, on a broad scale, during an emergency event, the city can consider either keeping transit services as consistent as possible while only missing services if bus operator availability is a factor, but ridership demand remains the same, or the city can consider reducing or suspending services in a manner necessary to address significant ridership decline and/or bus operator availability occurring because of the immediate or prolonged event. With the current E-Trans ridership drop of over 70%, under this proposed policy, a level-two service modification could be considered by the city manager for implementation at any time. Staff's preliminary proposal for what some of these service changes could include is identified on pages five and six of the staff report. However, since ridership and other impacts are still changing on a daily basis, staff is continuing to coordinate with SACRT to analyze current impacts in order to determine what potential service changes could be implemented in the most cost-efficient manner that would also minimalize impacts to existing riders. Any changes that may be implemented as, as a result of the current event will be identified on the city's transit webpage, and city staff will conduct public outreach to the greatest extent possible in order to comply with applicable federal public participation and Title VI regulations. Lastly, if the city's transit services are modified, reduced, or suspended during an emergency event, those services would go back to their pre-event service levels after the event unless otherwise directed by the city council. This concludes my presentation of the item, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Any questions?
Question, Mayor?
All right.
So Mike, uh, um, thank you for doing all this, too. I know, I know you're struggling as well, trying to, uh, manage these operations, uh, in light of all this. I, I just wonder how much outreach we've had with our, with our riders, and, and what, what have you heard out there?
That's a very good question. Thank you, Councilmember Sun. We've actually started kind of the public outreach process in regards to our, first, our cleaning efforts for our buses, um, to ensure riders that we are working with SACRT to clean the buses as frequently as possible. I think SACRT has done a great job, and they've actually published a lot of their cleaning efforts on, online, and also released some of those practices to the media, which they do implement in our city's transit services on our property. Um, secondly, we've also notified our passengers via rider alerts and postings online that we may have to implement service changes depending on driver availability. And on a daily basis, that kind of changes, because there have been reports from SACRT that some of our drivers have begun self-is... that some of our drivers have begun self-isolating due to several different reasons related to the COVID-19 event or for other reasons. And so, right now, service hasn't been significantly impacted, but we are kind of coordinating with SACRT on a daily basis, and we're also notifying our drivers, or excuse me, our passengers accordingly if we have any daily service changes.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm worried about our residents that will still require service and how we're gonna, we're gonna provide that if, if we end up adopting any one of these levels. I think level two was talked about being where we're at. So anyway, I'll, I'll stop there and, and wait for, for the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I'll just say that at Monday's meeting of RT, we voted to go to, and correct me if I got the, the label on this wrong, Michael, but I think it's Sunday plus service. So it was, it basically established a baseline that people could rely upon, but wasn't as robust as our, our regular service.
You are correct.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I don't hear anyone interested in speaking, so let's go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, you can read request comments into the record and/or field any phone calls or emails with a request to speak.
Certainly, Mayor. And on this item, what I have are two email correspondences that we've received since after the start of the special meeting. It's from Mr. Ralph Niz and another one with, I think that's about, he is with ATU Local 256, and then Mr. Douglas Cook submitted comments, and I believe he is a representative of Sacramento Regional Transit. So I'll start with those two items. From Mr. Ralph Niz, "Council members, in these trying times due to coronavirus pandemic, public safety as well as the safety of transportation workers is of utmost importance. ATU Local 256 and Sacramento Regional Transit have negotiated an alternative work schedule, pardon me, an alternative work schedule, which has helped to avoid layoffs as a result of the decrease in ridership. As the president/business agent of ATU Local 256, I am requesting the Elk Grove City Council Board members consider the same alternative at ETRAN. This will keep transit options open for the riding public in the city of Elk Grove." And again, that's Ralph T. Niz, President and Business Agent for ATU Local 256. And the second comment and last comment that I have received on item 3.3 is from Mr. Douglas Cook, who looks like the VP of Operations at Sacramento Regional Transit. "Good evening, council members. I would like to comment on the reduction or suspension of transit service in the Elk Grove area. As a member of the SACRT EMT staff, I would respect the request that the council take into consideration the ramifications of these actions. One, a change in service about 10% will require a renegotiation of contract and rates per hour. Two, the service changes will require SACRT to reduce staffing at the Elk Grove property. This will be harmful to employees at this time of need and could mean we lose valuable staff members to other employment. Three, with reduction in staff will require extra startup costs to ramp service back up to normal levels. The amount of service cut will also add to the recovery time due to staff training to replace employees who leave for other employment. SACRT is here to work collaboratively, collaboratively with you to address these issues that will affect employees and residents of Elk Grove. If you have any questions, please contact me." And that is from Douglas Cook. Those were the two comments that I received on item 3.3.
Okay, and there's no one else in that space? Let's go ahead and close public comment and council direction and direction. Members?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll go ahead and lead off. I, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation, but you can't, you can't running, run buses that people don't want to get on because of health concerns. And, and, you know, I certainly hope that our, our drivers are, are looked after and that the lifeline service is, is substantial in the, in the reduced levels, but I'll go ahead and move staff's recommendation.
Dan, got a motion? Is there a second?
Well, I, before I chime in, I have a question, whether it could be Councilmember Hume, since you're on RT board or, or staff, but I, I'm wondering, I'm still wondering how, how are we going, there, there will be residents that will still need service. So I don't, I'm still trying to figure out how we're going to provide that. Secondly, what, what about the option, we would have continued this bus service regardless if we were to do it at least until the federal stimulus gets worked through so that we know those drivers would be able to take advantage of the services because they'd be in place? Has that been considered? I guess I'll ask it to, to staff, Jason or Mike.
Councilmember Suen, if I may, the policy and procedures before you for adoption are not definitively saying that we have to implement the levels of service that are being proposed in the procedures. They are just policies that are put into place to give the authority to the city manager to be able to authorize those implementation, service implementations if necessary. I think it's important to note that as of right now, we are working with SACRT on a daily basis to fill any service gaps. We've directed SACRT to continue operating the service as it's currently scheduled. However, on, on some days, there may be driver call-offs due to illnesses related to COVID or self-isolation related to COVID. And right now, on a daily basis, SACRT is kind of shuffling and, and doing their part to try to get those open pieces of work filled. We haven't seen a service impact to that level, but this policy and procedure is, is essentially for the event that if we get to a situation where we know we have consistent operator shortages, or we have consistent ridership decline, then we can, or the city manager can implement these changes as necessary to kind of address those problems as they become very apparent.
Well, I appreciate that, Mike. What kind of lead time are you providing to allow, you know, the remaining, remaining riders a, a chance to find another, another way to, to get around? If we, even if we give you the authority today, if it's, if it needs to be implemented quickly in an emergency fashion, you still have folks that may need to get somewhere, you know, whether to the doctors or something. And without a, a, you know, a clear, you know, substitute, we wouldn't, we'd be just cutting, cutting service off without, without them having, you know, proper notice to, to make adjustments.
There is no defined notice in, in the, in the policies and procedures. However, we, we do, you know, there are circumstances that have happened where our contract provider, for any other, for any reason, has not been able to provide a bus operator, and we may miss a route or a service. And that's happened. That's actually happened during this contract. And so, when that happens, we do the best we can with the, the bus operators that are available to provide service. We notify riders immediately through electronic rider alert systems and on our websites about any service disruptions that may happen. And then we notify them of the next service that is available to bring them to wherever they need to go. But yes, this policy and procedure does not currently have any further notification methods other than we would do our, our, our best to implement any service changes that are more, are more long-term in a manner that is consistent with federal public participation plan and Title VI requirements, which would, would require us to notify the public ahead of a service change in multiple languages and also through various media before we actually implement those changes.
Mr. Costa, did I hear corrected? In addition to notifying them and letting them know that you will have some, share some options for them as well, too?
If we go forward with, say, maintaining everything a status quo, which is kind of what level one identifies in the proposed policy and procedures, then what happens today, and this, this happens right now, is basically if there's, for some reason, driver shortages, and we are know, we knowingly are going to miss a service route and/or a service trip, what we do is we notify our riders via electronic rider alerts, via postings on our website, or drivers, passengers can call into our customer service line and ask where their trip is, and then we tell them when the next service is going to be. That's our current practice right now. In the event that we would change the service routes long-term during the event, or in this case, COVID-19 event, we would then take more proactive approaches to notify passengers in advance of any changes, such as notifications on the buses, multiple language notifications, posting things on our website, and also identifying exactly what the changes are, which we have not yet determined at this time, to, to give people well-advanced notice that some services may have to be reduced in the near future. So that's kind of what our current policy and procedures are for notifying the public in compliance with certain federal regulations.
Any other questions?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, okay. I would just ask that, before we vote, I would just ask staff to, to, you know, like with other things, I mean, keep, keep us well apprised of this, this will change fast and it'll take effort for people to make, especially the ones that rely on transit, in order to make other, other plans, how to get around. I think, you know, we, I, I know I take it for granted sometimes, you know, be having access to a vehicle, and that, that flexibility, you know, doesn't exist for some. And so, some of these folks really rely on the service, so if we can find a way to, to help them as much as we can, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, before I call the, the question, Councilmember Suen, very well said. I think what's really important here is just notice so that people are aware. And so, you know, I wholly support that. So there is a motion, a second, let's call a question. Mr. Clerk?
So with that motion by Hume, second by Wen, I'll ask for the roll call vote. Councilmember Wen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And that'll carry 5-0.
Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of the City Council at 8:14 PM. And let's jump right into the regularly scheduled council meeting on Wednesday, March 25th, at seven, at 8:14 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay schedule.
And thank you, Mayor. Consistent with Executive Order N-29-20 issued on March 18th, 2020 by the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. Meeting location will be at the City Council Chamber. The chamber will not be open to the public. The meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, March 27th at 1:00 PM, and Monday, March 30th at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned, and it will be webcast at MetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting, but that also applies to any of our folks that are participating through the teams. Don't forget to keep your personal electronic devices that you may have on silent or not on vibrate mode. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate, and I will be implementing that speaker timer as we go forward. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer, that will be provided by the city clerk. We'll count down the individual speaker time remaining. When there's one minute left, I will just chime in to say one minute remaining, and then folks have that time to summarize their comments. In addition to that, for this meeting, during the meeting, if there is an item that the public wishes to comment on, they can email the city clerk, myself, Jay Lindgren, at ElkGroveCity.org, and I can have those comments that are emailed in for when we have the public comment opportunity for those items. I can read those into the record. We also have an ability to field phone calls from members that are viewing this from remote locations. What we need to do is you need to send your phone number to the same address, JayLindgren@ElkGroveCity.org. And then city staff will call, dial that number in at the time when we are taking public comment for the particular item, and get you dialed into the system so that you can make your comments to the council. Of course, that three-minute limit will be strictly observed, and we'll be checking in with the council as that item moves forward. With that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Wen?
Here.
Councilmember Hume?
Here.
Councilmember Suen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick? Making sure we still have Vice Mayor Detrick here for the attendance?
I'm here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here.
All are present.
All right, next item.
That'll actually take us to item 1.2, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. And we just ask for folks if they can locate our nation's flag somewhere in their vicinity or know in a position which they'd wish to face in order to do the pledge.
All right, if you can join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. 1.3, moment of silence. At the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. While we have our moment of silence, I would like to invite all of you who are joining us this evening to keep in your thoughts, our community, and how we are faring through this very difficult time, as well as our, our state and as well as our nation. If you could, join us in a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. Next item.
Take us to Section 2, approval of the agenda.
Okay, I have an agenda in front of me. Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion second?
And I'll go through that verbal roll call quickly.
Yes.
Councilmember Wen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Yes.
Councilmember Suen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Thank you all for indulging part of our act as being, as doing a teleconference meeting. With that, we don't have any items under Section 3 of the regular agenda. There are no closed session items, so that will take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring April 1st as Census Day.
Okay, do we have Carrie here?
Yes, I'm here. And for this first item, I think we have, you have the proclamation there in front of you, and we just want to recognize that April 1st is National Census Day, and ensure that everybody is aware and completing their census information.
Carrie, if you could go ahead and read the proclamation.
Sure, I will do that. So it says, whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by Article 1, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution to conduct an annual, an actual enumeration of the population every 10 years, and whereas the next enumeration on April 1st, 2020, will be the first to rely heavily on online responses, and whereas a complete and accurate census count is essential for federal, state, and local planning and representation, and whereas the city of Elk Grove has worked in partnership with the state, other local governments, local businesses, the school district, and community members and organizations over the past two years to ensure a complete count, and whereas the diversity and multiculturalism of the city of Elk Grove are important aspects of our community, and it is critical to make sure every community member counts, and whereas National Census Day has been on April 1st for every decennial census since 1930, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby recognizes April 1, 2020 as National Census Day.
Awesome, thank you very much. All right, let's move to the next item.
And that will roll us into item 4.2, Presentation of Census 2020 Team, and I'll turn it right back to Carrie Whitlock.
Okay, so let me just quickly share my screen.
Looks great.
Okay, so Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager for the city. So as I mentioned, the census is important for a number of reasons. The decennial census is used to allocate federal funds for numerous programs over the next 10 years. And additionally, representation in the U.S. House of Representatives is decided based on census data, as well as local redistricting. The National Census Day of April 1st, 2020 is a federally mandated date, as is the requirement for data for apportionment of the House of Representatives to be delivered to the president within nine months of the census day. In support of the decennial census effort, the city of Elk Grove has undertaken a number of activities. The city newsletters that have been sent out this year have both contained articles related to the census to describe the importance and encourage self-response. Both of the community event boards in the city have reminders to residents to complete the census with the URL for completing the form online. The Auto Mall digital billboard had census PSAs. Posters, flyers, and rack cards in multiple languages have been provided to local Chamber of Commerce, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee members, the school district, and have put up, been put up on all E-Trans buses. There's also mobile traffic signs, which will be in three different locations throughout the end of April. We have had to adjust a number of planned activities as a result of the COVID-19 response. So the Census Assistance Center that was planned for City Hall has closed due to closure of City Hall to the public. In addition, the in-person booths that were planned to take place at various city and CSD events over the coming weeks have been canceled. We are working to ramp up the use of social media to spread the word and are looking, are working with census points of contact in other cities in the region with local community groups to work on joint virtual activities, such as doing a city response rate challenge. We're also looking at what specific social media virtual events we can do on April 1st to encourage participation. We're working on also how to distribute census products that the city and CSD jointly procured to help get the message out. And so we're looking at the grocery stores to help distribute all of the Census 2020 grocery bags that we purchased and working with the food bank to try and provide the Census 2020 t-shirts as they're making deliveries. I also wanted to mention that the Census Bureau has made some adjustments to their schedule because of COVID-19. And so the non-response follow-up period has been adjusted so that it will not begin until mid to late May and will continue through mid-August. And the service-based enumeration and enumeration of the homeless population, which was scheduled to begin on March 30th, is now been postponed and will take place at the end of April and go into early May. The good news is Elk Grove is actually doing well so far in our self-response. So as of yesterday, 33.6% of Elk Grove households have responded to the survey either online or over the phone. This is currently the highest percent in the county. So we're happy about that. But we're also looking to continue to make sure that we ensure all of our respondent, all of our residents do respond. Finally, I just wanted to say the census is something that is very easy to be done from home. It can be completed online and there's 13 different languages that it can be done online at My2020Census.gov. It can also be done over the phone in 15 different languages. And so for those households that have not yet completed the census, the bureau will be sending out written census questionnaires in the coming weeks. And so it will also be able to respond back in writing. So with that, I am available if there's any questions.
Any questions?
No.
I don't hear any requests to ask questions, so.
Nope, no questions.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move to the next item.
With that, that'll take us to section five, our public comment. And I did have one member of the public that had sent a comment earlier in the, actually yesterday, to be read into the record. And I can commence with reading that to the mayor and council.
Okay, go ahead.
The comment is from Mr. Mark Graham. Good evening, mayor and council. This is Mark Graham in Elk Grove. There are many scientific studies showing that long-term exposure to electromagnetic radiation, EMR, compromises the immune system and makes it less efficient and less able to fend off various infections by bacteria and tissues. Given that, and given the present national emergency with the coronavirus, I'm asking you to either pause, delay the issuance of any cell antenna permits until the entire coronavirus threat is completely over and the state, country, and national states of emergency and emergency orders have been lifted, or issue permits with the limitation that the company may not install, construct, modify, erect, or operate any cell antenna until that is finished. You have the authority to do this. Ask your legal counsel. Also, the city is in the process of reviewing applications for cell antenna permits and may issue permits any day now. What you should do is provide written notice to every person living within 1,000 feet of the proposed cell antenna location of the pending permit and inform the resident that he or she is invited to contact the city about that. There are things that the city can do, such as regulate the operation of a cell antenna. People can ask for that, but only if they know. Please provide written notice immediately. Thank you, Mark Graham. And that is the only comment that I have. I am just verifying my inbox and I don't have any emails coming in.
All right, next one.
Jason, no video?
No video, Vice Mayor Detrick.
Oh, great.
But with that, I will take us on to section six, which is our general administration information from city manager Jason Berman.
All right, Jason, you're up.
All right, I'll make it quick. A lot of these items I've already covered in my previous comments are just two items I want to mention. One is a great, great piece that has been shown really on the national news that our police department's been doing since this COVID-19 outbreak really started. It's called Books and Badges. It's a reading series on the PD Facebook page and Instagram accounts. PD personnel are sharing a new book Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM. The project was launched to show goodwill by the department to support childhood literacy and encourage families to pause for a few minutes and enjoy a book. Since the launch, it has received national media attention. And then the only other item on here really was relating to the census and Carrie did a great job. Just encourage everybody to get out there and complete the survey online. And that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, but kudos to the chief and our police for doing those activities.
All right, next one. Next item.
That'll take us to section seven, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, let's start off with Councilmember Winn.
No comments.
Okay, Councilmember Hume?
Yeah, I'll just say that it seems like I have more meetings and phone calls and things now that I'm staying at home than I did when I was going to work. So I don't know how that works out, but I can't remember what meetings got canceled and what got switched over to teleconferencing. I know I did have the RT meeting Monday, as was mentioned. And I think that's it for what I have done. We've got a San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority teleconference meeting on Friday, as well as a paratransit teleconference meeting on Friday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Suwen?
Thank you, Mayor. We, last week, we had the Sacramento Transportation Authority, where Councilman Hume and I and many cities in the county of Sacramento approved their transportation expenditure plan 13 to 3. So it was overwhelming approval. That transportation expenditure plan will now make its way around to the different jurisdictions for similar consideration. It was approved at the Sacramento City Council last night unanimously, 9-0. And I think it will be coming before us in April. We had a library authority emergency meeting where we closed all the libraries and gave the library executive director the authority and increased budget authority to continue to pay staff while the library closures are in place. We have a budget committee hearing on that tomorrow to discuss whether administratively would be the appropriate mechanism to fund the staff. And then we also had a board meeting of the Sacramento Council of Governments where we adopted the regional housing needs assessment for the six-county region. And Elk Grove, just as a reminder, we have total additional affordable housing units we need to plan for, 8,263. 2,600 of those are very low, 1,600 of those are low, and 1,186 are moderate and 2,800 are above moderate. So that'll, you know, it'll be, there's still other concerns we have in the community despite the COVID crisis. We still have to worry about housing. We still have to worry about transportation and air quality and transit. And that's it. So I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have to ditto Councilman Hume's comments. My electronic communication to an email, phone calls, and text message has absolutely doubled. So that's taken up most of my time these days. Only thing I want to say is, you know, everybody be safe and stay healthy with everything that's going on. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The only thing I'd like to add is the task force is functioning. And I think the joint effort from the community really is making a difference. So I want to take this opportunity to thank the vice mayor for collaborating with me on that. It certainly is important for the vice mayor and the mayor to be the two that are advocating for this. And I think that having leaders come together from the community to speak on a regular basis will certainly be beneficial for the population that needs it the most. The other thing that I did want to add is I had the special opportunity to access some doctors that had access to N95 masks and a number of surgical masks that I advocated to distribute to our first responders here in Elk Grove. Very fortunately, the connection was made. And we now have the logistics in the police department and also the fire department directly connected to these two distributors, in which can provide masks directly from the factory. I've always been uneasy about having first responders, the folks that we rely on, not being protected. And, you know, certainly after connecting logistics for both departments to these two distributors makes me feel a lot better. And there may be more doctors that will be contributing or donating from their offices. And I think one dentist did do that today, particularly for subjects in which our police department is apprehending a suspect or taking someone to custody. They have to make sure that that person and the officer is protected. So I'm very pleased to see the effort along those lines. And that is it for my report. To the next item.
That'll take us to section eight, our consent calendar items. And just to let you know, Mayor, I do have, we have a caller who's called in. It is Mr. Matt Wood, and I believe it's in relation to item 8.24.
Okay, let's go ahead and open for public comment. And we connect Mr. Wood.
Go ahead, sir.
Are you talking to me, ma'am?
Yes, you can go ahead now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council, for taking the opportunity to allow me to comment. I know I sent an email. I know I've sent a couple emails to council. I think we were, I think Elk Grove Ford was competitive on this bid. I believe in reading your bid package that you do have the ability to award the bid to anyone, cancel all bids, or request rebids. I think what we're kind of, one of the things we're hanging our hat on is that you do have the ability to award the bid to anyone. I would encourage you to keep that business local. I don't think there's a time that maybe says that more than the current situation we're going through. The ability to keep that money and that bid local would certainly serve the Elk Grove community. The money that you spend with Elk Grove Ford goes back into that community. The out-of-town dealers that don't contribute to your churches, don't contribute to your local schools, your clubs, or your organizations, Elk Grove Ford and the Elk Grove Auto Mall certainly pile that money back into the community. I would ask Doug Scott to remind the council that in 2019, when the Ford Motor Company canceled 11 Explorers and left the city somewhat in alert, that it was Elk Grove Ford that stepped up, got the vehicles prioritized, and agreed to sell you 2020 Explorers, the new body style for the same money as the 19s. We were the ones that you went to. My last comment would be just simply on the tax difference. The money that goes to, if the bid was awarded to Downtown, that money and that tax money is at 8.25%. None of that comes back to the city of Elk Grove, per my understanding. Our tax rate is 7.25% and some of that money does come back to the city. So my last comment is, the last time we went through this, I think there's a misunderstanding. The then-owner of Downtown Ford did sue the city. They didn't win the lawsuit. The city had another meeting and took a vote. And if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Hume and Councilman then-Councilman, or maybe at that time Mayor Cooper, voted to award the bid and keep it in the city to Elk Grove Ford. I think we lost the vote 2 to 3, quite honestly. But I don't think the city ever lost the lawsuit.
30 seconds, Mr. Wood.
They awarded the bid to Downtown Ford by a vote. And with that, I'd certainly take questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wood. All right, are there any questions for Mr. Wood? No questions? Are there any additional speakers?
There are no additional speakers. So thank you, staff, for coordinating to have Mr. Wood in. We can hang up that line. And I have no other speakers on any of the other consent items.
Okay, then I'd like to go ahead and close public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
Mayor, as Councilmember Suwen, I'd like to request John Hobbs to give a background on the lawsuit that was referred to.
Okay, shall we go ahead and pull 8.24? And then the rest of the consent?
That's fine, thank you. Yep.
Okay, let's go ahead and pull 8.24. And then I'll open it up for a motion to move the rest of the consent items.
Moving.
There's a motion, there's a second? Okay, and a vote, please.
So for that roll call vote, I will go with Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suwen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And that'll take us on to discuss item 8.24.
Yep, Mr. Hobbs.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Let me address the prior lawsuit. The city unfortunately did actually lose that lawsuit in the Superior Court under similar circumstances. The vote that perhaps Mr. Wood is referring to is instead of appealing that ruling from the Superior Court to the Court of Appeal, the city council decided to abide by the court's judgment and vacate the initial award to Downtown Ford, excuse me, to Elk Grove Ford, and give the contract to Downtown Ford in light of the judge's ruling. Unfortunately, the city did lose that lawsuit. Elk Grove Ford was involved in that lawsuit as well, as a party. The facts of that lawsuit were similar to what we have before us today with a situation where the local bidder did not come in as the low bidder. Under the ordinance as has existed then, I advised the council that they could award to the local business. The court disagreed with my opinion on that and ended up setting aside the contract.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, well, given that, you know, that clarification, I don't see a Okay, well, given that, you know, that clarification, I don't see a reason to go down that path again, risking what seems to be the most likely the same result. So I'll move the item.
A quick question, Mr. Hobbs. My understanding is that the process and procedures have since changed since that particular incident. Is that correct?
Yes, the code has changed slightly since that incident with an attempt to try to give the City Council a little bit more discretion. That discretion, that process and procedure in the current code has not been tested in court. I think there is a reasonably good chance that if you did not follow staff's recommendation, or put it differently, if you were to award this to Elk Grove Ford, you're on the risk of litigation. I don't advise going down that path. The council could, if you so choose, reject all bids and try to rebid this. The results of that would be unknown, though.
Yeah, my inclination is really to reject and throw a lot of all out and rebid. Thoughts, members?
Well, the challenge is, I guess you don't, you don't know what you'll get back. And then I guess whether or not we need this to go forward.
And I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Soon. My thought is this, as Mr. Wood has indicated, they stepped forward and assisted the city. I think that says a lot for a local business that really has historically helped the city as a whole. Not only that, but in these times of crisis, I think we should do everything possible to help our local residents and our local businesses. Now, I'm not, I see the difference in the two bids. It really is small. And my question here is, considering the history that we have with Elk Grove Ford, considering what they have done for us, considering what we have done for the auto mall, are we willing to move in this direction and send a message that the City Council members and city as a whole don't necessarily are a hundred percent in support of them? I'm fearful. I'm not saying that we are, but I'm fearful that that might be the perception.
Mayor, what's unfortunate is, you know, they were given a five percent local vendor preference, and they still exceeded the lower bid. I'm not disputing that maybe we should reject the bid and start over, but we may be in the same place because there's probably only, these are the only two people that are going to bid on it. And what do we do when it comes back next time? And I know that only Councilman Hume and I were on the council when Elk Grove Ford came back to Elk Grove, and we gave a $500,000 incentive to Elk Grove Ford when they came back here. So we have done more than our fair share of incentives at the auto mall. Yes, they are one of our biggest clients, but it's one of those ones, we need to be really careful. Otherwise, people are going to stop bidding in Elk Grove if we're just going to keep rejecting all the time. But I could see both sides of it.
Yeah.
So, I, Mr. Mayor, yeah, this is Councilmember Hume. I stuck my neck out the last time this issue came up and took a pretty good beating over it. But I saw Mr. Murdoch's face pop up on the team's screen. I'm curious if he has some input to weigh in on this, or if the chief does.
Well, Councilmember Hume, the only thing, this is Bob Murdoch, the only thing I'd say is that we bid this contract several times, and these are the two, these are the two companies that bid it, and Downtown Ford consistently comes in lower, even with the preference. And so we could rebid it. We would need to negotiate an extension to the existing contract with Downtown Ford to provide us with the time needed to rebid it. And the question would be, you know, what would the rebid be? Based on history, I guess I would say that Downtown Ford would probably still be the low bidder, but that's not a given. So we could, you know, staff's available to do whatever the council directs.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, my gut feeling is we really have to do everything possible to help our local businesses. And, granted, I have a bias, but that's just my gut feeling. The future is uncertain at this moment. And I think that, you know, this may be an opportunity for us to do everything possible to assist local businesses.
So, we reject all bids and start over, but I'll tell you what, Elk Grove Ford better sharpen their pencil pretty sharp.
That's what I would hope, Vice Mayor, is that I want them to do everything possible. And I, you know, I think that, you know, considering a business at the moment, I think they would. I think that they would be encouraged to do that.
Well, they haven't, they haven't done it from the last time.
Councilmember Soon, you have something?
Yeah, I'll just say, I wholeheartedly agree with the sentiment. It's just, this isn't, you know, it's not like we're able to hand it to them. It would only be to reset the process. And I'm certainly open to that idea as well. My only concern was hearing our city attorney mention, you know, what, and Councilmember Hume mentioning the, you know, what seemed to be futility in what happened in the previous rounds. Maybe this time will be different. And, you know, I'm willing to go along with that, too, if we want to reset it, if there'll be minimal risk of litigation.
Yeah, I think that's well said, Councilmember Soon. I don't want to put the city in a situation where we would be sued, but Mr. Hobbs, correct me if I'm wrong, this may be the safest route, just to reject everything.
From a litigation avoidance perspective, short of awarding it to the current low bidder, you are in relatively safe waters to reject all bids and rebid it, with the unknown that you don't know what you're going to get back.
Well, I would hope that Elk Grove Ford sharpens their pencil and work magic. But I'm in a position where I'd like to ask the council for support. Let this be a motion that we reject all bids.
I'll second that.
You got a motion second? All right, roll call vote.
So for the roll call vote to reject all bids, I will go first to Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
So that's to reject all bids.
Okay, let's move to the next item.
I'm sorry, I heard some sound on there, but just making sure that nobody else wanted to jump in.
I think the implication, council, was to reject all bids and rebid. Is that correct? That's how we understood the motion.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor, this is Doug Scott, your Facility and Fleet Manager. I just want to weigh in. We do need to amend our existing contract with Downtown Ford Sales. We are out of contract authority to be able to do business to get our cars repaired. So if I can ask Mr. Hobbs to let us know how we can go about doing that tonight.
We'll have to deal with, Mr. Scott, we'll have to deal with that offline. That's not an action that's appropriate for this agenda item, but I can work with you on that offline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next item.
All right. And with that, that will take us to Section Nine, our public hearings. And our one public hearing is Item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution declaring the necessity in authorizing the commencement of eminent domain proceedings to secure real property interests necessary to construct the Camera Road reconstruction Big Horn Boulevard to Lots Parkway. And I'll turn it over to our public work staff. Your presentation is up. Looks good.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This is Kevin Bucy, Capital Program Division Manager. I'm here with Ann Grabba, our Real Estate Manager, and we'll be presenting the Camera Road Reconstruction Big Horn to Lots Parkway Resolution of Necessity. So here's an overview of the project. We'll be reconstructuring 1.25 miles of the existing two-lane road. That is shown in red on the map in front of you. It will improve safety as well as correct existing and operational deficiencies. The alignment for this project is four compatible with the ultimate alignment. So you'll see the dash line in yellow. That would be the next portion of the project, and it is aligned with that. All the drainage from this project will be going up McMillan Road or future Big Horn Boulevard to a detention basin in the east of Shed Sea. We plan on starting construction in spring of 2021. The project is fully funded with local and state funding, and we have SB $1, we have about $3 million in SB $1 that we need to start using for construction in 2021. So here's the existing cross-section of the existing road. It's an undivided road with narrow lanes and minimal to no shoulders. And here is the proposed facility. It is going to be a divided facility with standard lane widths and shoulder widths. We talked about the drainage system before, so we have a drainage system underneath Camera Road, which will require the road to be elevated five to six feet. In addition, on the roadside, we have recoverable slopes that we are building. So this design will support the planned development in SEPA. It also provides an east-west evacuaging route above 100-year floodplain, and it improves agricultural access. In the picture, you'll see a raised median. In some locations, we end up putting in a two-way left-turn lane to improve access. The wider shoulders also improve agricultural access specifically for truck turning. I'll give you an example. So this is the existing driveway at the Hardesty property that we're going to talk about in the future. Currently, there is no two-way left-turn lane. We'll be constructing one in front of that, so it'll improve egress and ingress into that parcel. So I want to talk a little bit about the alignments, and how we consider with the alternative alignments. So we initially looked at multiple alignments during the environmental process, and then we determined that keeping the existing alignment for Camera Road made the most sense. It maximized the use of the existing rightway, which was most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. The interim roadway drainage basin also aligns with the future SEPA basin. So we are putting the basin for this project where the SEPA basin is, as opposed to putting it on one of the parcels. And then also, as we discussed previously, it's designed to accommodate planned development in SEPA. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ann Grabba.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mary Lee, and members of the council. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to consider the adoption of two resolutions of necessity for the property interests required to construct the Camera Road reconstruction project. This hearing is not about compensation or value. It is about providing authority to proceed to eminent domain. This evening's hearing is a necessary step to ensure the possession and acquisition of those real property interests required for the project. The company's staff report to this hearing reflect three properties, but I'm happy to report that Jacoby has executed our acquisition agreement since the staff report was written. Kevin Bucy has provided you an overview of the project, the history, and the public need and necessity for your consideration tonight. There are four key elements that council needs to consider before adopting the resolutions of necessity. First, the public interest and necessity require the Camera Road reconstruction project. Second, the proposed project is planned to be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Third, the real property interests identified in the resolutions are necessary for the project. And fourth, the city has made offers to property owners in compliance with Government Code 7267.2. The Phase One project requires property interests from five property owners. As mentioned earlier by Kevin, the alignment maximizes the use of existing rightway. However, additional road rightway is required along with a new public facility and public utility easement. Additionally, a roadway drainage facility is required and temporary construction easements are required to establish irrigation, ditches, and fences on the owner's property. The below exhibit reflects the five parcels that the property interests are required from. The Jacoby property is highlighted in blue. The small parcel highlighted in red is the AT&amp;T parcel. The light purple parcel is the Saunders-Hardesty parcel. And just south, highlighted in mustard color, is the Reynolds-Fletto-Clark parcel. And just west of that is the Singh parcel in yellow. I'd like to provide you an overview of the acquisition process. Prior to sending notices to owners advising them that the city has made a decision to appraise their property, real estate staff and design team staff met with the owners to provide an overview of the project and understand the current use of their property and the impacts the proposed acquisitions may have. Once a notice of decision to appraise letter is mailed to the owner, the appraiser reaches out to the owner to schedule an appraisal. Our notice and the appraiser encourages the owner to meet and be present during the appraisal inspection in order to provide details about their property. The property interests required for the project are then appraised by the independent licensed appraiser. Once the appraisal is received by the city, it is reviewed by staff in an offer in accordance with Government Code 7267.2, is prepared and made to the owners. The offer is the full amount of the appraised value and includes notice that the property owner can obtain a second appraisal, and the city will reimburse them up to $5,000 for the cost of a second appraisal commissioned by them. Mr. Singh obtained a second appraisal, and Ms. Hardesty has advised that they are obtaining a second appraisal. Negotiations and outreach with property owners has been ongoing since making the offers to acquire the required property interests, but we have not been able to reach an agreement with two of the five ownerships. The two property ownerships subject to the resolution of necessity are the Saunders-Hardesty parcel reflected with the number one, and the Reynolds-Fletto-Clark parcel reflected as number two. Again, I'm happy to report Jacoby has executed voluntary agreement along with AT&amp;T and Mr. Singh. At this time, I'd like to discuss each property subject to the resolution of necessity in a bit more detail. The Saunders-Hardesty property is two parcels, a home site parcel and a large farming parcel, which makes up the legal larger parcel of approximately 168 acres. It is important to note that the proposed acquisition does not impact the home or the hay storage or shop buildings. The property is currently farmed year-round and typically produces four crops per year and is fully irrigated. We initially met with Ms. Hardesty late, last May, to review the proposed acquisition areas, and completed the appraisal inspection in July, and the city's formal offer was made to the owners November 5th in 2019. Several meetings have taken place with the owner on-site to review the acquisition areas and impacts to the property. The proposed roadway detention basin impacts the owner's pump located within the Shed Sea Channel drainage easement. The city researched and could not locate any recorded rights that the property owner has to the surface water flowing into Shed Sea. We have requested Mrs. Hardesty to provide any evidence that she may have reflecting a legal right to the surface water in Shed Sea Channel. However, to date, we have not received any such documentation. In addition to the Shed Sea pump I just mentioned, the property has a second pump and well along the Camera Road frontage. This pump is also being impacted by the project and must be replaced. As part of the construction contract work, the city will replace the well and the pump. This new well and pump will be sized so that the entire farming parcel can be irrigated with the replacement well and pump without the need for any water from Shed Sea. No counteroffer has been received to date from the owners. However, the owners have advised they are obtaining a second appraisal, but no acknowledgement from the owner has been received, advising that the second appraisal has been completed. The city has existing roadway easements for Camera Road and also McMillan Road that equates to about 4.82 acres. An additional 1.5 acres is needed for the construction of the project. Both the existing road rightway and the new road rightway will be acquired in fee. Additionally, the acquisition of approximately 2.9 acres for a public facility and public utility easement bordering the Camera Road acquisition is necessary. Also, the acquisition of 3.17 acres- Also, the acquisition of 3.17 acres is necessary for an access road and detention basin. This is the area outlined in red on the exhibit. The acquisition of the detention basin and access road leaves an uneconomic remainder as determined by the appraiser of approximately 4.75 acres, which the city has offered to acquire and will ultimately be required for the future shed sea channel improvements. And this is the area that's just north of the red outlined area on the exhibit. In order to reestablish the owner's fencing and drainage, drainage ditch, the acquisition of temporary construction easements is required. The Reynolds Fletto and Clark parcel is located south of camera road in the unincorporated area of Sacramento County and is approximately 319 acres. The property is currently vacant and dry farm, producing an annual crop of hay. Staff met with the ownership group in March of 2019 to discuss the project and provided the preliminary right away exhibits for review thereafter. The property was appraised in May with the city making the formal offer September 6th. Staff has worked with the ownership with regards to access control language and the ownership group has requested the city to accept an irrevocable offer of dedication from the westerly adjacent owner, Mr. Singh, for the future extension of Big Horn. The city has been agreeable, agreeable to the request with the condition that the ownership group negotiates and funds the acquisition. Additionally, the ownership group has requested utility under crossings to be installed as part of the city's project. However, the environmental documents do not cover this activity, so this request cannot be accommodated. The city has an existing roadway easement of approximately 1.19 acres. An additional 1.64 acres is needed for the construction of the project. Both the existing right away and the new right away will be acquired in fee title. Additionally, we are acquiring approximately 2.05 acres for a public facility and public utility easement. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, on December 14th, 2018, the connector A1, A2 camera road project approved the mitigated negative declaration and adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And on July 9th, 2014, the Southeast Policy Area Special Planning Area Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. Additionally, the city planning commission determined the project and acquisitions are consistent with the city's general plan and in compliance with the California Government Code Section 65402A. In conclusion, um, possession of all property interests required for the project is necessary for the city to proceed with the advertisement of the project. The county of Sacramento granted the city of Elk Grove authority to acquire and condemn property interests for this project within the unincorporated area of the Sacramento County. And this relates to the Fletto property as it is located in the unincorporated area of Sacramento. With the approval of the resolutions of necessity, the city will seek to obtain possession while continuing to negotiate with the owners. Staff recommends council adopt the resolution of necessity for the Saunders Hardesty parcel and the resolution of necessity, necessity for the Reynolds Fletto Clark parcel. Please do not approve the resolution for Jacoby as an agreement has been reached. Two-thirds vote of all council members is required for the adoption of the resolutions of necessity. At this point, I'd like to open it up for questions prior to public comment.
Are there any questions?
No.
Nope. No questions.
No. Thank you.
No. Thank you, Ann. That was a very lengthy explanation, but I know you had to dot the I and cross the T for the legal ease.
Alright, since there are no questions, there are no questions, so let's go ahead and declare the public hearing opened and open for a public comment. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if you can read any requested comments, uh, commentators that want their comments to be read to record or field any phone calls or email the question.
So, city council, I don't have any, uh, requests for calls, so we're not queuing anyone up. I did receive a, it looks like a comment, um, from one of our residents and I'll read it in. I was trying to get clarification if they wanted it read as a public comment. Um, I'm just gonna go out on a limb and read in the question that was asked by our resident. This is from resident Lynn Wheat, um, and it's a brief email. I have a question, how come the appraisals were not included in the staff report or packet? I have asked this question before and it was not answered, please provide a response. Thank you, Lynn Wheat. And that's the only comment that I have received on item 9.1.
Okay, um, then let's go ahead and close our public comments and declare public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Mayor, members of the council, this is John Hobbs. I, I, I know that there might not have been other comments. There was a letter that was sent in today by a representative of, uh, Hardesty, the Hardesty family. Uh, that should be, um, available to the council, presumably you, you've taken a look at it. Um, I just didn't want that to be overlooked that that letter came in today. It's actually untimely with respect to the time when the condemned knee, the person whose property is being taken. Uh, they were supposed to have submitted their comments by last Friday, but it is in the council's packet for your consideration.
John, I, I review that. I'm ready to move staff's recommendation to meet the deadlines that we need to meet.
I'm sorry, I spoke, I spoke over you. I didn't hear what you said, Steve. I'm sorry.
I said, I'm ready to move this on to meet the timeframes that we need to. And I know that I did see that letter, but as you mentioned, it's, it's not timely and they can still negotiate while we're going through the process.
That, that is correct. Yes.
Uh, this is council member soon. I'll second, uh, vice mayor's motion and I'll just add that I think we heard Ann explain to any claim to surface water rights, uh, have not been, no evidence has been shown thus far, uh, from the Hardesty property.
Okay, and a motion second. Roll call vote.
And for that roll call vote, council member when?
Yes.
Council member Hume?
Aye.
Council member Sueon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item passes 5O, those are the resolutions of the staff recommendation.
Okay, let's move to the next item.
Take us on to section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations. And item 10.1 is to receive an update on the city's diversity and inclusion efforts for calendar year 2019.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Cara Reddick, deputy city manager. Can you hear me okay?
Indeed, you're coming in.
Okay. Um, and then can you also see my PowerPoint?
And the PowerPoint is displaying. Thank you, Cara.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll give you a little background. Um, in Feb, on February 22nd, 2017, the community asked council for a diversity report. Um, this city staff conducted an external diversity audit and brought the results of that audit on August 22nd, 2018. We provided our first report back to council, which was about six months after that first report on April 20th, 2019. And tonight's report is a report regarding all of 2019. Uh, moving forward, we'd like to do this on a yearly basis. Uh, so as I mentioned, this report covers all of 2019 and kind of the beginning of 2020. I'd like to mention that the city has made progress and strides in the area of diversity and inclusion, but there is still more work to do. This work is ongoing, a top organizational priority and can always be improved upon. So for tonight, we're gonna talk about our recruiting process, our inclusion strategy, training, community involvement, some statistics and next steps. So some of these items I mentioned at my last, uh, report, but we've removed applicant names throughout the recruitment process. We incorporate bias trainings on all interview panels. We've expanded recruitment efforts for individuals with disabilities, veterans and women's based groups. Attachment one to the staff report includes the 48 ad locations the city has used during 2019. Those are customized for each job. Um, our police department has an 11-member recruitment committee that's focused on recruiting efforts, increasing diversity outreach and attending events. And attachment two to the staff report includes the 25 recruiting job fairs attended or held by that, um, recruitment committee and our HR staff. Regards to our inclusion strategy, I'm the appointed inclusion leader. We still continue with our 18-member staff team that's cross-departmental diverse. We meet two times a month. Uh, the team has recently decided to change their name from the diversity inclusion team to the diversity equity and inclusion team. We are continuing with our social media campaign of a city welcome to all. Um, we created an employee-focused mission vision, value and behavior statements. We're continuing with the city's new employee buddy program to connect new employee and new employees with, um, veteran employees. We rolled out a city lapel pin that celebrates diversity and we're continuing with the chief's community advisory board as a resource for strategies. Um, in regards to training in 2019, we held a brown bag on gender equity and out of that brown bag, we've created five subgroups that are working through different topics. Um, new employees are assigned a diversity training through Target Solutions. Non-police staff, they mandatorily had to attend a procedural justice and implicit bias, uh, training course and there was 154 participants in that. And our specific to our police department staff, um, post mandates racial profiling every five years. So last year there were nine trainings held with 155 participants. Um, police department staff also, um, conducted a principled policing and bias-based policing training. This is not mandated by post, but is a city requirement. Um, so in 2019 and 2020, 59 participants received that. Regards to our community involvement, um, in 2019, we dissolved our multicultural committee and we established the diversity and inclusion commission. Um, they have been doing some training with the American Leadership Forum. Um, they had a training in January and we were gonna have more in April, but I think those are gonna be put off for a little bit. But that, um, commission requested the council declare June 2019 as LGBTQ plus pride month. Um, they also participated in the SAC Pride March in June. Uh, we participated in the inaugural Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Legacy Pancake Breakfast in 2019 and 2020. We proclaimed, uh, February as Black History Month in 2019 and 2020. We participated in the MLK 365 March for the Dream. Um, in 2019, we participated in the Festival of Lights. And the Lunar New Year we participated in in 2000, in 2019. Our 2020 event was canceled due to early COVID-19 concerns. So as we kind of wrap the part up about what we've done, I wanted to go a little bit into kind of what do our numbers look like? And I think an important component is to look at our staff turnover ratio. So the table before you is, um, our turnover ratio for the last five years. And as you'll notice, the city hasn't had a high turnover ratio. Um, an average industry government turnover ratio standard is 5%. This chart, um, is a new hires by ethnicity and gender for 2019. So as you can see, people of color were hired 52% of the time as compared to 48% for white employees. This chart, um, this is new hires by gender in 2019. Uh, women and non-binary staff were hired 53% of the time as compared to 47% of the time for male employees. So one of the city's performance measures is employee diversity ratio by ethnicity. So these, this number is other than Caucasian. And I'm trying to, by showing things in five-year increments, I'm kind of trying to show the progress the city's making. So this measure fluctuates with each new employee that's left or that joins the city. But I think that you can see from this chart that we're making, um, improvements in this area by increasing this percentage. And this chart, um, shows a five-year snapshot of the city's employees' race, ethnicity and the difference between the 2015 measure as compared to 2019. Um, so the very last bar or the very last row that's in green kind of shows the difference. And I guess what I'd like to point out is that in the white column, that percentage is decreasing. So there's been a decrease of 8% in.
Cara, can you pause for just a second? Is there a way to move my, uh, where I hit the mute and unmute button? Cause right now it's covering up that green column.
Oh, let me see. Oh yeah, sorry. Sorry. Um, okay, so can you see that better?
No, it's not on your end. It's on my end. Is there a way to move?
If I can interrupt a little bit, uh, council member Hume, can you click your mouse like somewhere up higher on the screen? It might make the bar disappear.
Ah, there it went away. So now I gotta bring it back to mute myself again.
Okay, so essentially the, this chart demonstrates that in, in the non-white categories, the hiring percentage of people with color, um, is increasing while the hiring percentage, uh, for whites is, uh, decreasing. And, um, this chart is employee diversity by gender. Um, so what this shows is that, you know, at this point in time, as when we took the data, there are slightly more men in the organization than women. However, the figures are getting more closely aligned in 2019 than they were in other years. So you'll see in 2015, there was like a 10-point spread. In 2019, there's a six-point spread, so. Uh, but these are just kind of point in time data figures, so, um, they fluctuate with every new hire and every person that leaves. So kind of next steps, um, the, the internal city diversity equity inclusion team is working on a long-term training request for proposal um, that will be released around summertime, so we're looking to establish our long-term training strategy. Um, in regards to social media outreach, our PD has a goal to create a new recruitment page within their website that really showcases the benefits of the Elk Grove Police Department. We want to work more closely, um, with regards to military partners such as Work for Warriors, Military One Source, military readiness programs, higher, and other military veteran programs to partner with them and their recruiting efforts. The city's looking into offering a veterans preference program and PD is evaluating waiving the 60 college credit requirement for military veterans that meet certain criteria. Um, we're interested in creating CSO recruitment positions that are specifically for candidates that want to become officers. Um, we want to grow relationships with local community colleges and extend campus visits outside of our area. And in regards to high school and junior high schools, we want to continue our civic summer program, uh, continue the youth and government day, which we did last year for the first time. Um, increase our classroom visits and really introduce youth to pipeline programs such as the Explorer Program, Volunteer Program and the City's Ambassador Program. So we still have a long way to go, but our efforts and accomplishments have been recognized. Um, we recently accepted a statewide award regarding the advancement of diverse communities from the Lega California Cities, uh, City Managers Department in February 2020. And the award honored Elk Grove's efforts to promote the advancement of diversity within the community and in the workplace. That is the conclusion of my PowerPoint presentation, but I am available for questions.
I don't hear any questions.
Just, uh, keep up the good work. Thanks for the, uh, report back, Cara.
Yeah, I agree. I love the direction it's going. Great job, Cara and team.
Okay.
Everything looks good, Cara.
Okay. Well, open for public comment. Uh, are there any members of public side to speak?
And Mr. Mayor, I do have two members signed up. We have one via phone and then one who submitted written comments earlier in the day. Uh, but what I would like to turn into is our city staff in order to pull in the phone caller so that they can be heard on our system here. And just give us a moment while we pull that caller in. It is Mr. Amar Shergal.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everyone. It's Amar Shergal. Can you hear me okay?
Indeed.
Thank you. Um, my name is Amar Shergal. I'm Elko father of three. Thank you all for being here tonight and what is again, another long night. And I know you put in a long, a lot of long hours, particularly, uh, given, uh, the public health crisis that we're in. So I thank staff and everybody for the hard work they're doing. And with regard to this agenda item, the city is doing well in hiring women in all salary groups and should be congratulated for it. Uh, staff involved, the city manager and Cara, Ms. Reddick have done a good job in that regard. However, um, despite the presentation you received today, the hiring. However, despite the presentation you received today, the hiring of people of color is still mostly inadequate. The city is failing on it and we have been fixed it in the years that we've been working on it. When we started the process, we talked about how difficult it is to solve this problem when it's led by staff that are doing their best, but don't have experience in this arena. They're doing what they can, but the problem, or at least the solutions are beyond their reach. And what I'm talking about is that the city of Elk Grove is two-thirds people of color. Everybody in the day knows that. In 2017, we've still been hiring only 50% people of color. High earning positions, $100,000 or more, we are hiring 25% people of color when the city is two-thirds people of color. And if we improve it percent rate of one or two percent each year, as Ms. Reddick described, it'll take a decade before there's equality in Elk Grove, let alone any kind of remediation. To state that, two-thirds of the city is people of color, but our hiring is only 50% of color. High salary positions, people of color rarely get hired. That's a failure. We've had three years to fix it. I think it's time that we admit that we need some change. They need help. The staff is being put in a position that they really shouldn't be put in. And I recommend two things. First, that members of the council take a personal interest in the hiring for the short term to see what's happening, why people earning over $100,000 are rarely people of color. And then second, hire staff that has proven experience in turning around failing institutions on this issue. I know that the staff seems well. I know that the council was tried to address this, but there's no shame in admitting that this problem is more complex than we are able to solve. And it's time for a new strategy. Thank you very much.
All right, next speaker.
And this is the second comment that we received from Amandeep Singh, and I will commence with that comment. For the regular agenda item 10.1, although the city has made some progress since the diversity audit in 2017, it has become clear that we have a long way to go. Our city population is two-thirds people of color, but only half of the city's hiring since 2018 has gone to racial minorities. Further among jobs that pay over $100,000, only one quarter of jobs have gone to people of color since 2018. This is unacceptable for our community and we must do better. I call upon the council to involve themselves directly in overseeing the candidate search and interview process until the city improves its performance. There must be equality of opportunity for all residents of Elk Grove. And that concludes the comment from Mr. Amandeep Singh. And I have one quick check on my email, but no other comments have come in. That would conclude public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment. Council deliberation direction.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Singh. I have a question for staff. In terms of their hiring process, Kara, are, are we still doing, or when? And if we, if so, are we still doing the blind hiring process?
Yeah, I missed the first, I missed the first word that you said, but then I heard the blind hiring process. What did you say just before that?
Are we still, are we doing that? And when, when did we implement it?
Oh, so we, yeah, so through our recruiting software NeoGov, we, the names are redacted through multiple levels of the recruiting process. So the HR individual who screens for, who does the initial screening, she doesn't see any names. If you're the subject matter expert, which is the next level in the hiring process, you don't see any names. The names are only revealed at the interview, so because you're going to be physically meeting the person at the interview. And those were, so we do have those and we implemented those in January of 2019.
Okay, so just, okay, well, just last year then, all right. How many, approximately, how many hires have you done this past year?
I know our HR manager is on the line, but I would go ahead and guess 54. And then I would ask her if she feels that's incorrect to chime in.
That many? And then how many, you know, six-figure positions?
Hold on one second, let me just grab. So in 2019, we hired four positions. No, I'm sorry, let me, I'm sorry, let me back that up. In two, yeah, 2019, we hired four positions that are over $100,000. One of those individuals was Asian, three of those individuals were white.
Okay, and that's, those are part of the, obviously the blind processes you described earlier.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, I'd just like to, to point out, you know, I appreciate the comments during the public comment period, but Kara, thank you for starting your presentation in the staff report with the turnover ratio. You know, fortunately, we don't have a lot of turnover in the city of Elk Grove. And so that makes that, whatever you want to call it, it's not an attrition rate, but anyway, whatever you want to call that, a much slower process, but I don't think anyone wants to start taking jobs away from people in order to fill them with different people, so.
Okay, any other members?
Kara, what was the timeframe on that last over $100,000 employees hired?
So I had, I had mentioned in 2019, we hired, we hired, sorry, I'm looking at a chart right now because that wasn't a part of the original report. So in 2019, we hired four individuals that made over $100,000. One of those individuals was Asian, three individuals were white.
And do you have the, so far for 2020, what we've done?
Yeah, for 2020, we have hired two individuals in 2020 that have, that are making over $100,000. One of those individuals is white and one of those individuals is black.
Okay. Well, I have to agree with Councilman Hume. This is not an easy thing to, to change. And you also don't penalize our internal employees because of whatever race they are. I mean, it gets back to qualifications. And that's, that's the foundation for keeping the highest quality of service we can have.
I would like to just mention one more thing I should have mentioned in my presentation that I would like to thank our human resources staff for all of their hard work. I know the police department, their recruiting staff does a lot of hard work as well, as well as our internal city team and the city's diversity inclusion commission, they're all working really hard and we're, we're working to make progress, so.
You, you are Kara. I, you know, the reason why I brought the blind is because I, and it makes sense, it was only implemented last year. I'm kind of curious where it might take us and how that might look with another year of data.
Do we need to move to receive and file or?
Well, I just, this is Mayor Steve Lee, just one additional input. I'm just trying to think, you know, all the effort that you've reported on Kara is really good. What else can we do as a team? I mean, is there anything that is out there that we haven't done? Is there things that you're thinking about but haven't tried? You know, the way I see recruitment is it's an ongoing effort and it doesn't happen overnight. But, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm willing and able to assist in any way possible.
Yeah, so I guess I can mention some of the things, some of the subgroups that we're doing with our gender equity teams that I think will, you know, show progress in different ways with hiring as well as retention is they're looking at, there's a recruiting and hiring specific team that's looking at the kind of best practices in the field. And then they're dialoguing with our HR team and coming up with suggestions. We're looking at creating a mentorship program internally at the city. We're looking at establishing employee resource groups for our employees that could be, could be employees of color or interest groups, so we're looking to roll those out. We're looking at different family work policies. And then we also have a group that's looking at overall leadership. So we're looking at these from different lenses. And I think that once the work of these groups rolls out, that they'll be very positive for the city.
In your effort and in your work, have you seen any other cities out there that have, you know, done anything that's a little bit extra, that has changed and improved in their diversity inclusion efforts?
Well, we're always, we're always looking to get plugged in and to know what other cities are doing. Unfortunately, we are going to be going to the Government Alliance and Race and Equity Conference. That was supposed to be in April, but obviously that's been canceled. But we're plugged into different groups, so we're looking at the best practices of other cities. But I don't know that there's like the, a golden bullet out there that we found. But I know that in going to those conferences like GARE, there's a lot of cities that are doing more than us, but there's a lot of cities that are doing a lot less than us. So we're trying to figure out what is the best strategy and approach for us.
Okay, well, it sounds, it sounds like the effort is good. You're certainly on the right path. It isn't going to be perfect now, but I think I'm encouraged that we will continue to, to work on this. So thank you very much, Kara. Any, any other members like to chime in? Good? All right, receive and file. Let's move to the next item.
That next item will be item 10.2, the 2019 General Plan Annual Progress Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Christopher Jordan. I will flip through these slides here real quick. You have before you the General Plan Annual Report for 2019. This is a requirement of state law to do this every April 1. There's a number of requirements that are in the plan for the update for doing the annual review, which are outlined here. There are some new requirements that we're including here, including the requirement for states for surplus lands to be identified. There are several components to the plan, to the out report itself. Some major accomplishments we'll run through quickly. The overall status of the plan included new this year is the Climate Action Plan Report and the surplus lands. Then we have some findings and recommendations for your consideration. Major accomplishments, very quickly, some highlights, obviously the new general plan adopted in February of last year. And then we've been working through the implementation of including several zoning consistency amendments as well as the 200-year floodplain review. On the public work side, we have a number of projects that have been completed, including the animal shelter and the aquatic center and civic center commons. Have seen good development projects over the last few, last year. The top half of the table identifies major projects that have been approved in 2019. The bottom half are projects that have been submitted in 2019 and are now working their way through approvals. State legislature has been very active this last year in legislation as it relates to the general plan. A lot of it's been dealing with the housing elements. There have been one amendment relative to land use amendments. It's Senate Bill 330, which we talked about back in December as part of the phase two of the zoning revisions. And then there were some new requirements in the safety element, which we're taking a look at. Next step goes through and looks at the status of the general plan overall. As you recall, we do have the new general plan from 2019 and then we did one cleanup back in December. There are three amendments that are in various stages of processing. The first two are city initiated. One is a general plan cleanup, which relates to implementation of the annual report. And then we have the housing element update cycle six, which is due in May of 2021 that we are beginning, are going through now. There is one developer initiated amendment for California North States. It does not have a hearing date at this time. Again, on the legislative side, a number of changes in the housing elements, which will be incorporating into the update next year. There are some additional requirements for the safety elements, which we'll be incorporating concurrent with that. And then there's a new requirement that concurrent with the adoption of the next local hazard mitigation plan, which the county actually takes the lead in. We need to incorporate some information on evacuation routes into the general plan. So we'll be working on that over the next year. Chapter 10 of the general plan includes implementation and has a matrix that identifies all the things we're going to be going through. We have a full analysis of those and I'll talk more about them in a little bit of specific changes we want to do. On the housing side, at the top table identifies the city's share of the regional housing needs allocation for the 2013 to 2021 planning period. I believe Councilmember Sue mentioned the new numbers are out for the 2021 to 2029 planning period, which is what the next housing element will be dealing with. So this is nearly the end of the reporting period. The bottom table reflects the production that we've had during the planning period. And as you can see, for above moderate units or units that are targeted more towards above moderate households from income perspective, we've done well. For the extremely and very low income, low and moderate income, production has occurred at lower than what the allocation is called for. Certainly, there are some market dynamics related to that. On the Climate Action Plan side, there's five specific targets that we identified for having completed in 2020 or by 2020. Those have all come in, in fairly good shape. There are some additional work elements relative to the Green Energy Program under SMD that we'll be coordinating with them on to continue that effort. But many of the other components are in good shape. In terms of project approvals, you can see a list of five on the right-hand side of the slide. These are projects which had cap measures implemented within them as part of the project and their conditions of approval. So you can see that we are implementing the cap on projects as they come through. In terms of the surplus lands, you saw this at your last meeting and approved seven sites. So the section just incorporates that action and we've now done the reporting to the state as required. So findings that were identified in the report. The legislature continues to focus on housing production and safety as a major issue of statewide concern. We don't expect that to change going forward. There are a number of updates to the safety element that we need to do and they are tied to the timing of the housing elements. We do need to align better some of the general plan action items and have some recommendations for you on that. And then overall, we've had a good strong for showing on implementation of the cap. So the recommendations that we're asking for support for this evening and would bring back through the process for future amendments is with the housing elements, including the safety elements persistent, consistent with state law. And then on the implementation actions, and this is just a short summary, the staff report goes into this in more detail. There's some timeframes and extending some of the work efforts out an additional year based upon staff resource availability. Some changes to complete actions to moving them to ongoing for regular monitoring, even though they may otherwise be complete. We want to adjust some of the lead support departments to better align with where departments are actually operating. And then there's some revisions on the economic development side relative to streamlining the approval process for new and expanding businesses to align those better and pull out the zoning related components into a separate action. And then lastly, with the next local hazard mitigation plan, we need to incorporate the evacuation round information into the safety element. That concludes my presentation. Available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't think there are any questions. All right, thank you, Mr. Jordan. This time one open for public comment. Mr. Clark, is there anyone who has signed up to speak?
So for item 10.2, I didn't have anyone sign up prior. We don't have anyone dialing in and I am reviewing my inbox and I don't have any comments coming in, so that would close any of the public comment.
All right, let's go ahead and close it and council deliberation and direction. Members, any input?
Good job, CJ.
Thank you.
Great job. All right, I think that's it. We're receiving file. And let's go ahead and then close this meeting, adjourn this meeting at 9:39 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.